Thanks, Bob. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. I will -- we have quite a busy agenda this evening, so I will waive the meeting minute approval until the end of the meeting. And if anyone's recording, would they let -- make it known? I will go right to the public hearing section. Anybody needs a copy of the agenda? There's a copy on the table, at least one anyway. The first item is a Form C for Ted and Margaret Staples, Zero Broad Street. Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 13, 2019, at 7:00, Room 320, Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, to consider petition 11-19 for definitive subdivision plan from the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 18T, to Ted and Margaret Staples, One Wagon Road, A or M.A.S., seeking to make improvements to the point of access on a previously approved subdivision plan in order to provide adequate access to the lot located at Zero Broad Street. Assesses map two, Lot 1025A5 and 1025A7 in the A30 zoning district.
What is yours?
All set? So, the lot is Lot 85, Center Rock. And we have an easement that continues down about 300 feet.
Is that on, Bob?
Apparently it's not working.
So, I guess I can't get that.
Thank you a little bit.
Just grab the other one, if you would. Is the green light on?
Yeah. I need to sit down.
Sounds like it's on now.
It's on now, you can hear it. Is it on? Good? Yeah. So, the lot is Lot 85, Center Rock. The access, we're looking for access from Broad Street. We have a 50-foot wide easement. The extent of the improvements would be a 16-foot wide road, which is very similar to the approval in 2009. The drainage has changed a little bit. The sewer would continue from Broad Street to a manhole in Lot 87, and the water line would -- would mean would be terminated with a fire hydrant, and we continue the service to the house through the right-of-way. And that's pretty much the center of it. All the utilities would be below grade, and the road would be replanned asphalt.
Is 16 feet sufficient width? The width of the road, 16 feet?
Yeah, that's what's proposed. Customarily, for a single family, for a single structure, that's what we've requested in the past. We're just looking for some input. Is there any input from anyone else?
We haven't received correspondence from anyone else on this one.
Is the hydrant within 300 feet of the --
No. No. It'll be about -- from the -- Location of the hydrant now, up into the center of the building pad, it's about 550 feet. And I went off of NFPA 1, which has a recommendation of 600 feet. And my thought of putting the fire hydrant where it is here, it would be of benefit to more properties up Acorn and Broad Street. And to extend it into the property would be a pretty significant expense for the water main. So, I see it as a benefit of where it is at the end of Broad Street, but...
Did you get any input from onset water or fire regarding the need of placing of the...
Not formally.
Do you have to do -- look it over and off?
I've not been given the plans to look from an engineering standpoint, but I would like to make a comment with respect to the first sheet of the plans. There's a note on it that says that this plan has been included for reference only and is still valid as recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. Couple of notes. This was my plan that I did back in 2009 for Edmund Staples. It clearly has been altered by GAF, which they have a right to do, but I would request the applicant to have my name in all reference to my name being taken off this plan, since it is not the plan of record. The plan of record has nothing to do with GAF engineering and had my name only. So, I would request that my name be removed from this plan, since it's not an actual copy of the plan that was recorded. He could certainly get a copy of that plan if he wanted to include it in the file application, and it would have the plan book and page on it. As you can see above the title block where my name is referenced, there's a blank for a stamp and a signature. On the recorded plan, that would have been my stamp and my signature.
It's had a couple of changes since 2009.
Yeah.
If you ever use a reference.
I don't mind making reference to the plan that's recorded. I just do not want my name referenced on this plan. I don't think it's appropriate.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that wishes to comment or question what's before us?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. John Browning with the Wareham Land Trust, who owns the adjacent property and...
Nancy McHale from the Land Trust as well. John and I had a few questions. One of the questions that we have pertains to the banking of the roadway. Would it be banked toward the vernal pool so that it would drain into that side, or banked the other way, so that it drains away from the vernal pool? Because clearly, the vernal pool is one of our major concerns here.
So, I can answer that. In 2009, it was crowned and had drainage on either side of it. And it's been modified now to be banked away from it, with drainage on the opposite side of the vernal pool.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I couldn't tell from looking at the plans which way it was going to happen. Go ahead.
Question or request, I guess I would have, would be that the -- although there's a 50-foot right-of-way, the road's only some 16 feet, I guess, and that the whole right-of-way not be clear-cut or trees removed, which might be on the right-of-way, but not where the roadway is. And I think that may have been a condition of the earlier request.
This is what the council is...
Sure, the parcel's before Broad Street, the extension to 2.
No, it shows the easements that were granted when this was signed. I would say it's all three.
They're better out than me.
Well, part of it's missing. Here, all three.
Yeah, no, three, then. The stamp.
And at this particular time, you're just seeking single-family residence on that, or is that still up in the air?
The intent is one single-family residence, and that's it.
Excuse me. I believe that I was looking back in the old deeds, and one of the conditions of the 2009 was that it was to be a single-family home in perpetuity, that there was to be no further subdivision of the property. And we would like to request that that remain in effect, please, or that same condition be...
Well, the reason I ask is I believe the property that the Land Trust now owns, someone proposed multiple duplexes on it. So, that would be a -- it could be a single structure with more than one. Does it have that?
The property is not part of this application.
I'm just curious why that notation, not here, you have that notation on the here and here? I guess...
Identifies the parcel as not to be considered a separate building lot.
Until frontage is confirmed, sorry.
The frontage is required, if it is not.
I would make this, the road's not constructed, I would imagine. Any questions, concerns?
I still had a couple of questions. One of them was about the cost of this and the cost in perpetuity, that the easement states that the cost should be the sole responsibility of the grantees for the cost of construction, maintenance, upkeep, repair, et cetera, for all of the improvements that will be done on the easement.
Are you saying that you don't -- the Land Trust property should not be responsible for the access improvements?
Exactly. And we don't want to have to bear any of the cost for maintaining the drainage or repairing the road surface or any of that.
Even if you should decide to use this access to create an access point to the property, a parking lot or something similar?
To this point, if we were to put a parking lot, we still would have the -- we have the right, in terms of the way the easement was granted, to have pedestrian access along whatever improved driveway they put in there. Okay? There is no intent at this point to put a parking area in there. Parking is -- would be on Broad Street as it currently is. I mean, if we were to put a parking area in, it would be perilously close to the vernal pool, which is counterintuitive. Yeah, it would be the timing of any work that's being done there, because the spring and early summer are the most -- the salamanders, frogs, species that live in the vernal pool are most active and sensitive at that time. So, to limit work being done at that -- in those months would be preferable, if at all possible.
Do you have particular dates for that?
I don't have them off the top of my head, but I could provide them for you. I think that's pretty much what my concerns were. It was, you know, to maintain the integrity of the vernal pool and the viability of that Appreciate the considerations for that. Thank you for answering the question.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I am Susan Mann, and my mother, Marjorie Mann, owns the property next to Ted on the opposite side from the Wareham Land Trust. And I just have feelings I like to express. And I wish we could kind of step back and think about an opportunity that exists here, because my mother would not want to develop the land. And there's the Wareham Land Trust on the other side, and I just had always wished that maybe this could all be a preserved area, which could be of value to the town, where, you know, one house would bring in some taxes, but a whole large preserved area could be of great value in other ways. Like in Point Independence, the houses are very close together and tight, and there's not a lot of open land for people to enjoy, for children to play in, people to walk, exercise. And I just think it's something to think about for our future, for future generations. And just an illustration, I was reading an article the other day where there was a doctor in California who was treating a child who had been exposed to trauma and had nothing to offer the child. And finally, he came up with the idea of writing a prescription for the child to go out in nature. And the family took the child out in nature and had great results. And now, there are actually doctors who are writing prescriptions for people to go out in nature. So, it's just something I'd like people to think about for the future. And I have -- I just am curious about, I don't know how government works and how our town works. I was curious if there were plans or guidelines in general in our town for balancing development with preserving areas. And just curious if I myself were interested, what kind of support or guidance the town might be able to provide in preserving land.
As far as what's before us tonight, they are seeking guidance on what would be sufficient access to the property.
Yeah, I under...
As far as preserving it, that would be a discussion, say, between the owner and the Land Trust or other interested parties that may want to purchase this property or make some sort of inquiry as to how it could be preserved. That would be mutually agreeable with the owner. We don't have any determination at this level as to how -- what the future of the property is.
Do...
Other than can they create sufficient access to access to property?
Yeah, I realize I'm a little off-topic, but just, I have no idea where, like, you know, it seems like there are guidelines when you're determining, you know, do you have frontage for a property or whatever, but are there guidelines in our town for providing for wildlands?
The -- most of the time, when it gets to this point, it's kind of too late, usually, to preserve. You say unless you can find something that's mutually agreeable with the owner, that, you know, the Land Trust or Conservation or an entity could purchase or place a restriction on the property to keep it natural.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, on the back part of this letter that came from GAF, this is an explanation of the list of waivers that's attached to it that was a part of the original development. The question came up as to whether or not the whole width of the right-of-way should be cleared. There was a waiver provided in the approval that was previously granted to Edmund Staples to clear 16 feet plus whatever the width of the drainage swales was to be on both sides. So, that was done previously.
I didn't find your original plan. I think it was dated 2003.
I suspect it was updated in 2009.
Let's grab both, 2003 and 2009.
Yeah. A lot of things transpired in those years, as I recall it.
The roadway cross-section shows 16-foot road width with 3 feet on either side. With the drainage trench on the uphill side, which would be the Land Trust land.
It goes the opposite way, doesn't it, George?
Yeah. I thought it came down from that.
Now, if you look -- if you look on Sheet 2 of the GAF plan, it shows the trench on the side away from the Land Trust. It's on the westerly side of the road. It's on one side.
I'm just looking at the side slopes. I thought it came down.
It looks like it has a high point, not in -- not quite in the middle of the lot, and appears to pitch in two directions, if I'm reading it right. No, I'm sorry. That's a 100-foot setback from that vernal pool. It is pitching away toward the northwest, and by doing so, it's pitching it toward the side away from the Land Trust property. So, any surface runoff would be going toward the trench, which is on the opposite side of the road. of the road.
Well, I would say that you would say adjust the plan the way Mr. Ollies requested and place the, the road as close to the, at the westerly boundary.
It's the west side down.
Yep. The westerly edge of the Broad Street. Right-of-way.
So move it down the sheet, is that the idea?
Yeah. Does this require conservation approval or?
Yes, it does.
So they will give you your conditions as to work, you know, what needs to be offered or protected. The existing pavement end of Broad Street looks like it favors the, favors one side.
Right, the opposite side of where we want to go.
That if you just made your bend a little sooner, you could, where the bend in Broad Street is.
Just go a little sharper.
You could, you could slide down to the westerly end of the easement. Believe it gets fairly flat down there, too.
Where is that, the GAF one? I haven't seen it in my packet. This is, oh, this one.
This is?
This is 2009.
These are the same waivers you're requesting at this particular juncture?
The letter states that.
Right.
It says, no reason that all the existing waivers granted in the original approval would be granted again. I believe there should be a double negative there. I think that mean that all of the orig, the original approval waivers would remain.
Well, some of the specifications here are, they say 16-foot roadway and two-foot, and your plan.
Calls for three feet.
Calls for three feet, so that there's, there's an adjustment there. Street lights, street to sidewalks. I would just conclude that they're granted for a single residence. Anything more than that would have to upgrade the road.
To come back for upgrading the road. I would also suggest that the parcel that's used for the frontage, the J-shaped parcel, be identified as part of the right-of-way for easement.
Which parcel? You talking A7?
I believe it's A7.
Yeah, A7.
On both sides, is that parcel both sides? Is it this whole?
No, it's not. It's last six, George. Just that parcel is split.
Okay, A6 goes all the way up there.
Okay.
So should be. We need to have them come back with the plan directed. We condition it otherwise.
Are you going to require water department? Water department?
Well, they should have had some input on it, yes. But they, you don't know if the plan was forwarded to them or, did you forward the plans to them or if they hadn't picked it up or?
We, we forwarded plans, but haven't gotten an answer.
We met informally with them, but I didn't present this plan, the final plan.
I would think if we conditioned it, that they must adhere to water and sewer department requirements, I would think that.
What's the files?
Do we have a, do we have anything written on this or?
No, I don't.
Let's see, we need any other notations here? We need to make these corrections and come back.
I think it's, it's best to have the title block corrected.
And your request was to make A7 part of the roadway layout for Broad Street?
Rather than a separate parcel. But if they, if they change the lines, it would still be a separate parcel, but its purpose is for access and utility improvements for the, for the single-family.
And anything else? No need to update these waivers.
So the lot A7, is that something we're going to identify on the plan as different than we are now?
I, I don't believe it was identified as, as providing access and utility, access to the, to the lot. And if it isn't otherwise identified, it should be part of the easement.
But that was kind of the subdivision roadway.
Right.
This is an existing street layout.
My, my question, I guess, does have to do with the name of Broad Street versus the driveway on the easement. So will the, that, the roadway for the land trust property, will that be considered Broad Street or is that a private driveway?
That was part of the original street layout, so that, that's why I was just discussing with Ken is how the property lines are drawn. I would think.
Because if Broad Street is that parcel of, or that 50-foot roadway onto the land trust property, why would there have needed to be an easement granted? I mean, the land trust wouldn't have been able to.
The easement is not on that part, portion of the, of Broad Street. It's on the, the little J parcel that's on the west side of the parcel where he's proposing to develop the single-family home.
I'm sorry, Ken, I'm just not getting it.
This is what's showing the Broad Street now. This is the parcel I'm talking about.
Well.
Right. Excuse me, Susan.
Broad Street ends right here.
The pavement ends there.
The pavement ends there.
The pavement ends, but not the right-of-way.
The easement provides access.
Right, the easement, but the easement is over the land trust strictly for access to this parcel and, for this parcel and then potentially for this parcel in the future.
Right, and what he's asking for is access.
Access to that parcel.
To this parcel.
And through that parcel, it's right there. So that parcel I wanted to have identified as part of that access easement.
He owns it, he doesn't need an access easement for that.
He doesn't need it from the land trust. He, he needs it for frontage and for the utility access to the property.
So without it, he doesn't have frontage, right?
That, that is providing that frontage to the parcel.
That's more technical than I know, so, but that's what you're doing. So I don't understand what you're asking for.
To identify this not as a, as solely as a parcel, but also as an access to the, or the driveway and utilities to the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that, there's no reason to make that part of Broad Street. Okay, so we'll adjust these.
Conditions, waivers.
And if you make the corrections on the plan, I think waivers have to be listed. One of the notations have to be on the board.
There's standard notes in the subdivision rules and regulations.
Yeah, they must, this predates those.
I have no problem with the notes, I just don't want any reference to my name on the plan because it's not my plan. It's not the same as what was recorded in the registry deeds.
There are other people. Anything further?
Mr. Chairman, there's some other folks that want to speak.
Where are they? Put your, raise your hand or identify.
Are there other folks to speak on this matter? No? Okay.
Very good. Continue for this next date. Make those requested changes and we'll continue to the June 10th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion, do the same?
Motion made, as stated.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That's the 2009.
Back with my name here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is site plan review for Factory Five Racing, seven to nine tow road. Seven dash nine.
Viking logo built.
What's that?
Viking logo in the middle.
The Factory Five logo, it's pretty nice. Ken, I think there's some half-size plans in there also. I think Kimberly brought those over. There should be some, if you prefer half-size.
And that'll be classes R.
Mine aren't that good.
The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing, May 13th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, room 230, 320, rather, Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, to consider petition 15-19 for a site plan review from requirements of Article 9 and Article 15 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaw to Factory Five Racing, Carriage, JAF Engineering, 266 Main Street, Wareham, seeking to construct a 12,000-square-foot warehouse located at seven-nine tow road. Assesses map 108, Lot 1004G, and a portion of Lot 1004A in the industrial zoning district.
Good evening, I'm Bill Madden, JAF Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Factory Five and their site plan review that's before you tonight. Just a little bit of history, back in 2016, Factory Five acquired a piece of property adjacent to the existing facility at number seven tow road. You might recall that we prepared, submitted a formative plan dividing a portion of property that was owned by, I guess it's the Phillips family, C.G.J.R., calling. And what we did is, we carved off a 30,000-square-foot parcel, we called parcel A, and what the intent was is to create that parcel A, convey it to Factory Five into Lot 1004G. One of the questions that came up with Charlie's review dealt with the ownership of, I guess there was a subsequent deed filed at the registry of deeds that actually created two separate parcels. Our intent when we developed the plan was to include them all as one parcel, and we calculated all our lot coverages, parking, and things of that nature, basically including parcel A with parcel G. So I think that there was a piece of housekeeping that needs to take place with respect to those deeds. Because I think there was some confusion as to whether they were under separate ownership or combined ownership. I only see that as a secondary matter for what we're talking about tonight, if that's, if you're so inclined to hear the discussion. Essentially, the building is in the industrial park, it's the portion, the portion of the site that we're developing is the police bakery portion, that's where the distribution is made for the bakery products that's taken from that building. And what we're proposing to do is essentially demolish everything on that side of the building, the parking, what have you, and combine it with our lot. And in addition to the 12,000-square-foot building that's proposed to be constructed, we're also showing a 50-by-20 addition on the showroom side of the Factory Five building. This sheet right here is essentially our existing conditions that we have on the property, designates the parking that Factory Five currently has, their drainage, their footprint of the building, and the demolition that will occur as a result of the proposed project. On sheet number four, we indicate how we're going to access, how we're going to access the site. We're coming off of tow road and the driveway that'll serve as access to the loading dock in the rear of the proposed 12,000-square-foot building. There's also 400 square feet of covered loading dock, that's also part of the plan. So effectively, the entire new building is 12,400 square feet. So when we come off of tow road, we show a parking lot going into the new warehouse site. It has eight parking spaces. There's proposed to have two to four employees in that warehouse building. They're currently employees of the company. There wasn't really any proposal for an expansion of employees to work in this facility. I mean, they're essentially going to be transferred from the major building that's located a little bit further east. But that driveway comes through, we have a loading dock out the back, we have sufficient maneuvering area for tractor-trailer to back up to the angled loading dock door at the rear of the building. The number of load, it's not going to, that building will not receive tractor-trailers each and every day to the site, there may be two or three a week, that will deliver product to that warehouse. But the sole intent of that warehouse is to relieve some of the storage concerns with product in the manufacturing facility and enable them to do the construction of the vehicles with a little less clutter and a little less space comprised by the stores of the stock that they use to build the cars. So that's what we do, we have 20-foot-wide access, right, access which is in the rear. There's a small ramp that goes into the building that will be utilized to transport any materials that are necessary to be used in production from this building to that side door over here. And as a result of having that doorway that's large enough for a vehicle to be put into the garage, or into the warehouse, we're required to put a floor drain in there by plumbing code, and that will have to go to an MDC trap prior to tie it to the municipal sewer. There's a sewer easement that runs down the driveway. A portion of the driveway will be built over that. And Charlie did point out that a small portion of our building, about five feet or so, would be into the sewer easement. So we're going to need to, we're going to need to talk to the sewer department, see if they have any objection of us being there. If there's a problem with the building, we could pump out the easement a little bit to compensate for the building projecting into it. All the utilities are going to come from the west, to the west side of the building. We have a fire protection, six-inch fire protection service. I think we're showing too much water service, electric and gas. It all went through to a mechanical room on the west, the northwest corner of the building. Move the dumpster location up in the back toward any degree, and that's pretty much it with the layout and the storage, the utilities coming into the building. Sheet number five indicates how we're going to manage the stormwater. We have a small catch basin located at the driveway entrance to pick up any of the monop that leaves our side. We're going to capture it here, put it into a manhole, discharge it into some self-circuits leaching structures. This entire front parking area is going to be constructed with forest pavement. We did that so that we could meet our lot coverage requirements. So we designed forest pavement per the MASTEP stormwater standards on the forest pavement cross-section. We also picked up some small, some roof drains that will come off the building and discharge those into small drainage bases across the front. On the east side, on the west side, we also showed the ability to capture roof, discharge that into an infiltration trench that also goes into a drainage base in the rear of the site that picks up the drainage from the back loading area and circulation area. All of our drain is designed to accommodate a hundred-year storm event and keep it all contained onsite within our drainage basins. We also have a little side manscaping wind, it was done by a manscaping architect, so we have pretty intense landscaping on the 21 tow road. It allows the property lines to the west and to the east, and to the south as well. This point also indicates the photometrics for the lighting that we have. The lighting is really limited to, over the front door, you can see the photometrics of the light fixture. There's a light fixture in the front, there's one in the center of the west side, east side of the building round, and there's one over the loading dock that shows a little bit of, there's also light over the loading dock that lights up the back area. That's pretty much a little proportion of lighting. There's not, high demand, there's not a lot of people coming into the building where it is, where it is a warehouse. The final sheets are basically our cross-sections. We show a five-foot sidewalk in the front. Our forest pavement also has a small portion of concrete in the front of the parking lot, so the front ends of the cars will be on a concrete pad as opposed to the forest pavement. And that's pretty much it on the site landscape. It's a relatively small project, but this, we're hoping to develop the entrance as basically an entrance way into the Factory Five site. As you know, the layout of tow road is essentially just a large parking area in the front, there's not much differentiation between the layout line and the parking that we have here, and we're trying to give this entrance a little more definition that doesn't really exist there today. That's pretty much it, a relatively small project. Charlie has reviewed it. We did reply with a letter today to the planning board on most of the comments, and I just delivered those this evening to Ken. So with that, I'll just open up the discussion for comments and any input of the board.
Is there any elevations?
You know something, I do have elevations, and I did not, I did not bring them. I can't really do the description much justice without having the plan in front of me, to be honest with you. I'm just looking to see if I have a copy or two of them in this file, and I neglected to bring them, they were right on the... I know we're going back and forth with a few things, but as far as the building goes, I believe there's split block in the lower half of the building in the front, and some glass across the face of it, and ribbed metal on the face as well. The size of it was, I think, 80 by...
100 by 120.
100 by 120, so did I miss something on that? The building's going to basically match the existing building, so it's more like...
Can you come up to the microphone?
Oh, can you come?
While he's coming up, I just want to say, this is a fantastic business.
Thank you, I do appreciate that. My name is Nate Johnson, I'm the Director of Operations of Factory Five, so, yeah, the building, basically, I want to match the one we have existing. So it has a, whatever, stucco front with a blue band, which is our Factory Five color, is blue, and then I just want the other one to match that as well. So it'll have, I think that by, it has to have two offices and bathrooms, all that stuff, all that stuff will be up front, so it'll be windows, it'll basically match, it'll just be a smaller version of the existing nine-tow road building.
We tried to align the front, the face of both buildings pretty much together. This, the new building would be stepped back five or six feet, something to that, something along those lines from the face of the existing building, but I do have the drawings, I just forgot to bring them, apologize for that.
Want me to run back? It's going to look like a standard industrial building in the...
Well, it'll look like the...
Compatible with the existing...
It's going to look a lot better than what's there right now, I can guarantee it. Just right now, it's just unfinished. And so I'm trying to, you know, we have the other people across, there's the self-storage all that stuff, they keep their yard beautiful. We have this company that we've been here for, I think next year will be 25 years, we've been in business and in Wareham. And we like to show off, you know, our product, I invite anyone here, some people have been there already. It's a nice, clean operation, we have people come from all over the world to buy these kits. And so when we come down the road, it's kind of a little dumpy sometimes. So this will be nicer, you know, it should be a nice campus-looking area, so.
Get greeted by the towing operation first before you get there?
Yes, that is part of the tour, we tell people to hurry on by and go see us at the end.
What happens with this rock and boulder pile in the back here?
The rock and boulder pile, we're just working with the butter at the rear, those are, our understanding is that he had an opportunity to store product on the Calis site when it was owned by the prior owner. So, you know, Mr. Fielding came into the office and we had a discussion with him about that, and so those piles just need to be removed, it's his product that's there, so we'll work with him to get those, get that material off the site, and we're just going to straighten out our end, and whatever he does with his product on his land, I think, is really going to be up to him, assuming that he's, you know, operating in compliance with the rules of the town. So there's a lot of, you know, those piles are overgrown, there's a lot of other material that's mixed in them. It's a tangled mess back there, but our goal is to remove that, make it flat. It has to be removed, we have a drainage basin going in over there.
I love this business. I watch on Velocity every night, so.
Thanks.
They do do a good job there, good company and good representation, I think, of what we'd like to see down in there in the industrial park.
I think it's just, it's just going to complement everything else that's going on in that corner tow road.
Yeah, sewer easement is active?
Yes. And the sewer department doesn't really have too many, you know, I haven't, not been able to uncover any drawings. I've been in contact with Guy directly on that and have not been able to come up with much information on that sewer easement itself, other than the elevations and inverts that we've been able to obtain and put on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak a little bit to that. I probably concur with Bill that you're not going to find much in the sewer department because I believe it's a private easement. And it was put in at the time that CJ, E and R did their original development there for the purpose of allowing a sewer line to come down the road from what is now the Mayflower Bank so that that particular property could be tied in. My main concern about putting the building in the easement is if there are others who have rights in that easement, that they at least acknowledge that, that it's encumbered by that building. Because the sewer line that's there is about five feet away from the foundation of what you proposed to put in. So, that would be my concern, that if there are others who have rights in the easement, that they at least be allowed the opportunity to say whether or not they agree with it to go there. The other aspect of it is that I don't have a problem with it with respect to the location of it. I don't think there's any move, any reason to move the sewer line because the building foundation is going there. I don't think that there'll be any pressure against the pipe or anything like that. It's a small pipe. Spread footing foundations will be deep enough so that there shouldn't be any impact on the pipe. So, that's not the issue. The issue is more of a legal one and those that may have rights in it and use that and whether or not they would have sent to having something over an easement that they have rights in. The only other issue I had with the plan, Mr. Chairman, has to do with that area in the back. Now, right now, the plan is indefinite in terms of how the full grading is going to be done. It talks about it being a, in their response, JF's response, it says a gravity or a sloped retaining wall. That may be the truth. And I have no problem to see that it won't work. But right now, with the jumble that's back there, apparently, they weren't able to get sufficient information to show what the grades are and what they will be once that area gets cleaned up. So, that leaves the question open because it is a drainage area that they were showing on the plans as having a slope against that stone wall. And there's no details of the stone wall to show that it will essentially be impervious to any blowout if the water level rises in that drainage area. So, there needs to be some information put on the plan that will clarify that. If they're working with the abutting owner on the property and, and it's their stone and they can move it away so that we can have a decent detail of it, I'd be happy with that. But those are the main concerns that I have on the plan right now. I took a quick, brief look at Bill's comments. For the most part, I think we're in agreement. There may be some minor things that we'll have to address, but for the most part, it appears that they have made some changes in the plan. So, we can go from there.
And these plans do represent the changes that we identified in our letter as, in the plans that you have before you. So, they were revised late, late today. And I know Charlie hasn't had the opportunity to look at those yet. I think we can come up with a solution to anything with that, with that stone retaining wall, whether we put a, you know, polyethylene barrier in there to prevent any seepage coming out, you know, whether or not, you know, the abutter wants to match his grade with our grade. I think those are the types of things that we have to try to work out, try to work out with him. But it, you know, it's, I think it was clearly understood by the abutter that, you know, that we do have the right to do this on our end and that he does, you know, we don't want to just dispose of his property. We want to work with him to figure out how that's going to be taken care of.
And he owns 1,004 B, is that correct?
That's correct. I'll add also that we did go to conservation. I think as part of site plan review, we're required to get a determination of conservation. And I don't think we have the final piece of paper from them, but at the public hearing, they acknowledged that there were no wetland resource areas subject to their jurisdiction on the site or within a hundred feet thereof.
So, anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this point?
I would just say the elevations, I know that'll be, that'll be requested. The lighting plan is in there.
Yep.
Looks like pretty much everything is there other than...
Yeah.
And... Yeah, I would say that's the only thing we're missing is... And you need some sort of determination on the easement.
Is there a file?
And the, yeah, the... Well, she's got a timeframe on your debris file?
I mean, pretty much I'm anxious and ready, ready to go on things, to be honest with you. I can drop by those architecturals to Ken's office tomorrow. I could actually go back and get them tonight and give them to you tonight if you... Once I'm done here, I can just go pick them up and I'd be happy to do that. I have no issue with it.
You said all your engineering is...
I said that what I, for me, from a real review, I haven't had a chance to do that. A quick review, it looks like they've addressed a lot of things, but without actually doing a check on it, I can't tell you a hundred percent.
So, is he on the 10th? Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that the next meeting?
Yeah. Did I get a motion for the same?
A motion to continue our site plan review, Factory Five to...
June 10th.
June 10th?
Second. Any discussion? Oh, there you go. Thank you. Which time we should have a full board, I would expect?
Yeah, okay.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thank you, Bill. Next item is site plan review, special permit for Bay Point on Sedav, phases two and three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 13th, 2019 at 7:00 PM, Room 320, Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road to consider petition 14-19 for definitive subdivision plan and major modification to special permit and site plan approval the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81 T, and Article 7, Section 740 of the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Bay Point Country Club LLC, 1275 Wampanoag Trail, Suite 14, East Providence, seeking approval of phases two and three of a previously approved site plan by constructing Bay Point Drive, Starboard Drive to serve units 31 through 34, 78 through 82, and 54 through 89, and Beacon Street to serve units 35 through 53 and 83 through 86. To modify the previously approved site plan special permit located off of Onset Avenue, Onset Map, Mass, assesses map 2, 8, 9, 10 lots 1,004A, 1,004B in the Conference Recreational Zoning District.
We have one copy of the plan that was submitted today. One copy was given to our consultant engineer, Charlie Rowley. I don't have any other copies at this time.
Okay. Take mine for the table, Ken.
It's revised copy.
I said, I'll look over your shoulder.
That's my revised copy. Maybe it's my copy.
Gentlemen.
Good evening. Tim Faywood, Stone Street Corporation, Chris Reynolds, and Tom Principi from Principi Engineering. This evening, we're here to go through some changes to our previously approved plan that extends and moves the main road in Phase Two, 12 to 15 feet, and creates a little spine that wraps nicely around one of the greens in the middle of the golf course. So, Mr. Principi will take you through the, the changes to the plan and what was previously approved.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Principi, Principi Engineering Company. Again, if I may stand up, probably easier to point out this color rendering. This top plan is the actual plan that's in front of the board.
Can you, can you grab the microphone?
Does this work?
The other one.
I got it.
You got it?
I shut it off.
No, it's not working.
I am.
The one on the table. Yeah, you grab that.
Okay. So, the, the plan here on the top of the easel is the current plan that's in front of the board this evening, tonight. These reflect the current changes. The plan that I had printed in our archives, this is the existing special use site plan approval and definitive plan approval that we received, I believe, April 2017. Mr. Rowley sent an email out today with a few additional revisions. I believe that was the date of the previous...
That was the original site plan approval.
Original site plan approval. So, this, this evening, we're here tonight because there's some modifications we'd like to make to that original approval. The, the big modifications we're making is this roadway here is called Starboard Drive. It connects Bay Point Drive to Coon Street. This road here is also called Beacon Street. Those two roads are very similar to the previous approval. The only modification we made to Starboard Drive is we shifted the Starboard Drive approximately 12 feet to the north itself. The main reason we did that is just to create some additional separation distance between the golf course fairways and the back of the houses. There's some existing vegetation here. Along here, we're trying to keep as much of that vegetation as possible. It was some of the topics of discussion we had with Mr. Rowley and Mr. Buckland on some of our meetings through this new plan set. The other modification that you'll see is you'll notice this leg we talk about, again, a comment from Mr. Rowley is we need to come up with a name for this. It's a shared driveway, but we need to come up with a name. What's that?
Anchorway.
Anchorway is one of the names that we're proposing for this leg of this development itself. As you can see here, the number of units is staying the same. We have approval for 56 total units. That is not changing at all. So, those 56 units are spread out through an additional two acres of land. We're actually kind of decreasing the density, which is the purpose for this anchorway shared driveway itself to service these particular buildings. And then, we added an additional drainage basin, which is shown here on the north side of this turnaround. We have overflow parking scattered again throughout the site. Went through the same protocols as we did with the original phase here at the bottom, which was originally approved in 2017. The, I believe, again, we're utilizing a pump station itself as part of the original approval. All of the infrastructure and utilities are the same. Again, we have public water, gas, electric, and a common pump station to service this entire Phase Two and Three is what we're calling it. Also, the change on this current phase is the split between the number of duplexes and single families. On this proposal, we have only three duplex buildings shown on this Phase Two and Three here. And those are the major changes that we're proposing.
How has that changed since the last submission? As far as duplexes versus single family?
As far as the original 2017 submission? I believe, actually, give me a second.
There were quite, there were quite a few more duplex units than single-family units in the original.
Yeah, we had about 16 duplex units.
So, that would have been 32 individual homes, right? 16 buildings that were duplexes.
So, the same amount of units against each case, couple of units.
Is that... Sure, isn't it somewhere? Based on market behavior?
Yes.
What are you displacing on the golf course to create anchor?
Woods. So, we're, we're basically utilizing a wooded area that wraps around the 16th green that's being displaced.
Is it the plan in here that shows that? Shows what the underlying golf course looks like?
It should be in existing conditions. Again, if you go to sheet seven, there's a grading key sheet. That'll show you the existing tee boxes and fairways and wood tree lines. Sheet seven of 24. Sheet 7 of 24. And then, if you'd like to go to Sheet 9, it gives a better scale. This is more of a 40 scale drawing. So, Sheet 9 gives you a little bit better clarity on some of the existing conditions. So, Sheet 9 probably better represent sample for you. There's a small cart path that runs down just to the, let's see, the west of Anchorway that we're calling the shared driveway. So, you can see a little bit of a clearing there. There's a little cart path there that we're going to be utilizing.
Our department's good with the cul-de-sac. You can make all the turns.
Yes, it's a 50-foot radius, yes. We went away with that with them.
So, there's almost three duplexes?
Right. Units 85 and 86, 46 and 47, and units 40 and 41. Two of those duplexes are the shared driveway, Anchorway. There's a duplex here at the end of Anchorway. Right at the beginning of Anchorway and off of Beacon Street, yeah.
I take it you've not had an opportunity to review this?
Yeah, we've, I met with Mr. Fay and with Chris and with Tom and with Ken a week or 10 days ago. We went over a number of the issues on respect to the registry plans and some of the other details that were needed. And then, I did pick up the copy of the revised plans today and was quickly able to just go through it. And I sent out an email late this afternoon. I apologize for that, but it's the only time I had to get it out. Basically, what this plan does is provide the second half of the special permit subdivision approval for the project. This phase is under the special permit already. So, the only thing that the board needs to do with respect to the special permit, as I reviewed it, was to make a determination that the building separation, the setback from streets, the sideline or rear setbacks are in conformance with the approved dimension limitations that were placed on the special permit for Phase 1, that the number of units stays the same, which I believe it does, that no more than three units of the same style be placed in a row along any street. And those are the major things that I read in the special permit today, which is a part of the approval for Phase 2 and 3 the board needs to go through. I made a comment that either the dimensional limits have to be put on this plan or you should be supplied as a part of this application, a copy of that plan that showed what the dimensional limits were so that you'll have something to compare to. There's nothing here other than to scale those. And quite frankly, I didn't have time to pull up the old plan to see what those limits were. I think the front setback from the street lines was 20 feet, and I believe the sideline and rear was 15. But don't hold me to that because I haven't had a chance to review it. I think they're in good shape that way.
Mr. Rowley?
But I don't know for sure.
The, on the title sheet, again, I think previously, we're talking the building setbacks. We have front is 12 feet, rear is 10, side is 18. And I believe that was copied over from Phases 1.
That's what I have to check because I thought I read something different in the special permit, but I'll check it out.
And that's provided for the board and on the title sheet that's in front of you as well.
And the building separation was 20 feet in between buildings as well?
If the separation is 20 feet, then there are some that are less than that. So, you need to look at that over. I ran a scale on it today. In some places, not every place, but there might be half a dozen where it's closer than 20.
We'd have to check that. I'm not sure. 20 seems pretty substantial.
I do remember a number of 18. I thought there was 18.
I thought it was less than that. I, but I don't have that information.
It needs to be confirmed anyway in order for the board to make the determination that you're in compliance. We have 16.
Right.
Yeah, but if you move it, if you have the last lot of our special permit, if you move it, it has to be 20.
We have 12 between these two. This is Phase 1, 12.
That's Phase 1. Phase 2 was different.
Oh, yeah. Different.
The last issue of the special plan was 20.
So, this is the original approval. 34.
14 in the original.
This is the original approval.
Overflow parking consistent with what you talked about before? 16 spots for 56 units?
That's correct.
That's consistent with?
That's consistent with the previous approval. We didn't take any additional overflow parking away.
Seems like there's a long run here.
Mark, I can hear, what were you saying?
There's a, it just appears to be a very long run without any overflow parking.
You were regarding Starboard Drive?
Starboard Drive, yes.
Along Starboard Drive and this road here.
Yes.
You don't get to, you're 10, 12 houses in before you get to overflow parking.
So, again, I mean, at the intersection of Beacon here and Starboard, we have our overflow parking here. So, maybe Station 300, 400, at the end of the development, we have overflow parking. And then, we have overflow parking on the other side of Beacon, Onset Intersection, Starboard. And then, another additional overflow parking just off the left as well. And then, we also have overflow parking on what we're proposing, Anchor Road, on the shared driveway that we call the sack. So, we have this, this, alongside, just within, going along, new layout of houses. And then, a whole part of this was to add this additional two acres, keep our underground system, just to spread anything out a little bit more. The original proposal was a little bit congestive and.
I think the objective of the overflow parking is to keep cars off the street, right?
Right.
What is the behavior with, do you have current overflow parking? Parking through the night here?
We have not had any closings yet. We're working towards our first round of closings in the coming weeks. So, we don't have any sense of that right now. It's under construction.
Yeah. I know, I'm just having this thought now, but just watching overflow parking in current conditions, it's almost you have to put signage up there to say, "No, I'm parking." Are these people going to, stationary to start collecting cars as part of their household there? I mean, we're talking one spot for every three houses under this current measure right now. So, we never, we don't control the scenario.
Each home has a provision for two spots, so.
And a garage.
And a garage, right.
Mm-hmm. So, four cars?
There's, in the condominium documents, no. It doesn't specifically say.
It doesn't say that you should have more than four cars. Do you like the food?
Sorry.
There's nothing that would prevent a family from having more than four cars and spilling out onto the street?
Well, our target market, and we're batting a thousand with this, is a downsizing community of people that are over 50 years old. So, to date, of all the sales that we have, it's a couple and a single. So, there's no families with children that are in Phase 1 to date.
That's it. Going to my parents' gated community down in Florida, two-car garage. Can't park a car in the garage, stay in the driveway. You know, and there's two 70-year-olds with four cars for some reason down there. He just bought another one. Just problem solving here before you come to an issue.
Out of the previous approval, was the sewer design most recently submitted at this point?
Sewer design is part of the, it's supposed to be part of this.
It's, yeah, it's part of this, yeah.
And it's complete.
Yeah.
And it is part of the submission.
I did make a comment about that in the email that I sent out today, that I need a little bit more information on that. I can't report to you as to the adequacy of the pumps or anything because I didn't receive any information on that. Yeah, the sheets show something. I'm not sure, maybe Tom can clarify this. There's a scheme there from FR Mahoney, and then, there's another one from Boydco. So, I'm not sure what's happening, whether their Boydco's just providing the structure, whether Mahoney's deciding the pumps. I'm not sure what's going on there.
Sure, yeah, if I could elaborate, Mr. Chair. I did read Mr. Rowley's email. On sheet, on the detailed sheet, we have a pump station that we're proposing here, located, if I may point it directly, just located along Starboard Drive, just at the south Starboard Drive, in this location. That was part of the, if I can point out, the previous approval. The previous approval also identified a pump station along Starboard Drive. It's actually in the same location. It's the same design close because we're keeping the same amount of units itself. So, for clarification of that, the reason there were two separate specifications and details on that and regarding the FR Mahoney detail is, I know the board's not aware of this, but again, what we were referring to as a seat-up property itself where the clubhouse is, there's a future proposal for that. And originally, maybe six months prior to this, we had the overall master plan for the engineering to incorporate that. Again, that's another separate application that's coming down to be reviewed with the board. But we've designed that sewer separately itself. We had a full master plan set, and we've had meetings with Mr. Rowley and Mr. Buckland to kind of try to guide us along on how to actually get it permitted itself. So, we thought it would be more efficient to break off of that, cut that out of the approval process, and keep our previous Phase 2 and 3 approvals separate because we're modifying those previous approvals. And we didn't want to add anything new to this modification that we have in front of the board this evening. So, just to clarify, which, again, we have the, what you're seeing this evening is the first major round of revisions after our meeting with Mr. Buckland and Mr. Rowley. And then, again, I know the town hall was closed on Friday, so I sent an email to Mr. Rowley, and I had our office drop off those plans early this morning as soon as we could. And Mr. Rowley was nice enough to at least give it another quick look, and he had some of those additional comments. So, we'll reach out to Mr. Rowley and, you know, identify any other additional revisions that are necessary for the plans, but that would be one of them. So, that was the reason why that FR Mahoney quadplex pump detail, because eventually, we'll need that for our future phase, which is separate from the application tonight. But to elaborate on the pump station, again, we know we had some back and forth a couple of years ago about sewer. That was a very big topic for us. But again, what was approved before is the same as what we're going for now. We're not actually altering at all. We already went through the sewer commissioner's office, and Guy Campina already reviewed everything. It's a pump station that we're proposing off of Starboard Drive, which is going to collect all of this sewage from the 56 total units itself. It's going to be a Boydco, actual pump station with duplex alternating pumps. We've already gone through all the engineering and the analysis, and I believe the capacity of the pump is around 135 gallons a minute at certain, let's see, 37.5 total dynamic head. So, that was the proposal. So, the modification in front of the board this evening doesn't alter at all any of that, those flow characteristics that we already originally designed.
Just a side note, your plan calls for going down Onset Ave, up over the hill?
Right now, there's an existing forest main, four-inch forest main that goes along Onset Ave up to Independence. So, as part of the previous approval, which we need to carry over into this, and one of the conditions from the sewer department is we have to extend, right now, the forest main is discharging to the top of Independence and Onset Avenue at that high point. We need to extend that existing four-inch forest main another 130 feet down to the next sewer manhole, which is the beginning of a run to go to the South Street Water Pump Station as part of this approval in this Phase 2 and 3 itself.
The reason I ask is I think they're paving down there, and I wondered why they would do that if you're going to come around behind them and dig it up.
I'm not sure if we could.
I think I probably need to talk about the pump station and all the details of that with Tom.
Yeah.
To understand, because I'm not sure at this point, we haven't discussed the changes in the pump station with respect to the EDC parcel and what that will do to capacity requirements and so forth, and how that all gets put together. I just don't have an idea right now. So, we need to talk about that so I can give you a better indication. I don't have an idea right now.
Questions from the board? The only thing that I can see other than that is a little better definition on what the underlying conditions of the golf course. Those lines are very faint. It's kind of hard to make out what's underneath there. I'm sure that'll be. We did get a comment, a Cahoon Road resident that requested this be read into the record. Letter is in reference to public hearing that held on May 13th, 2019, to consider Petition 14-19 a modification of a special permit and site plan approval. I am spokesperson for the Cahoon Road neighborhood and unable to attend this meeting, this hearing. I respectfully request that the concerns of Cahoon Road residents be read and included in the public process. Unfortunately, Cahoon Residence, Cahoon Road residents continue to have ongoing problems with Baypoint construction trucks entering and exiting the construction site using Cahoon Road. Despite the current special permit indicating they should not be doing so as recently as last week and since the spring construction has begun, we have repeatedly been in contact by email with Planning Director Ken Buckland, former Planning Board Liaison Alan Slaven, Chief Walczak, and Lieutenant Karia. The lieutenant has spoken with the Baypoint Construction Manager numerous times in regards to this to no avail. Since the special permit indicates no access using Cahoon Road, and the problem continues, we urge the board to have this matter resolved prior to any further approvals for construction or changes to the special permit. Baypoint has not been a good neighbor, and no matter who we complain to or how often we complain, the violation of their special permit in this regard continues to be an issue. We are very concerned that with the approval of Phase 2 and 3, it's going to make matters worse for Cahoon Road residents. Unless Baypoint ownership resolves the matter, it should not be, it should not be difficult for them to notify all their contractors about the restriction of their special permit, not using Cahoon Road to reach the construction site. However, they are remiss in doing so, and Cahoon Road residents continue to suffer the consequences. We plead with the planning board to enforce the requirements of the current special permit for Baypoint Construction. We also plead with your board to be certain to include the same technology of not using, terminology, excuse me, not using Cahoon Road to enter or exit the construction site. If plans of Phase 2... not using Kahoon Road to enter or exit the construction site if plans of phase two and three are approved. Also to remedy this ongoing violation of their special permit in whatever way you can. Cecily Patricia Platt McLeod, twenty-eight Kahoon Road on behalf of the Kahoon Road residents. Want to offer a response?
I'd be, I'd be happy to. So with respect to phase two. This is the main entrance off of Onset Ave. You've got the building building here, you can down in the vault, clubhouse is here. You will turn down this way and that's where the development of phase one is. When we go to phase two, it's in the exact opposite direction. So right now, we're building twelve homes and have an address Kahoon Road. So our subcontractors in the contract, we have them using Baypoint's main entrance. We think that we have policed that diligently. There's sixty-two units, that is the village complex, that will receive a Federal Express package, right? Someone has something delivered to them, someone has a EPS truck. So there's activity going in and out of the village condominiums that when that truck comes down Kahoon Road, GPS takes you down Kahoon Road to get into the villages. GPS takes you down Kahoon Road to get to any of the homes that we're, that we're building on Kahoon Road. If they're a sub of a sub, that's happening. Our subcontractors are managed diligently to use the main entrance. So I think it was an early conversation and as vendors came to the site, that was happening. I think we're correct there. I think some of the traffic that has taken place is not necessarily odd traffic that's taking place. And I also think a lot of the activity that is of the homes we're building with an address of Kahoon Road for a delivery that's coming and a GPS driver trying to get to thirty-two Kahoon Road, he's taking Kahoon Road. He's, he's a one-time drop off, he's not a subcontractor. In terms of heavy construction equipment, in terms of our subcontractors, I, I can represent to this board, they're using this main entrance. And we police that building. So with respect to phase two, when you commit to Baypoint Drive and go left, you're going to, all the activity is going to be away from Kahoon Road. With respect to phase one, we're, we're near completion and we, we don't allow any construction equipment out of Kahoon Road. We're diligent on our subcontractors. And there's other type of activity that happens there that is not directly related to us.
She does specifically mention construction vehicles, so I'm not a PS, so.
No, I, I don't know if that means a pickup truck.
Yeah, I mean, we've been called on just a van, like not a, like a regular van, but if it has a commercial plate, she calls the police on it, which is little definition than a construction, you know, a van, no ladders on top, just a regular work van. That is also considered, she considers construction equipment, not heavy machinery, nothing like that, but just a commercial plate. She calls the cops on them and the subcontractors have been notified.
There's some video as well. No, private.
Can you identify my truck?
So we're going to figure that out. It was ten point eight and then it was.
That was sixteen point four lots. Phase two.
And phase two.
This large. If the CETA. I was going to say, that's what's commonly referred to as the CETA piece.
What sheet is that, George?
Eight.
Twenty-four.
Okay. I did make a comment about that. I think the only reason that's in there, if you look in the upper right corner, there's a section of Starboard Drive that ties into the existing road system.
Yeah, right there.
That's the only reason that that particular sheet is in the set that I can see. There is another sheet that's similar to it that has been attached to the set that will go to the registry. That particular plan, which I think is registry four, I don't see the reason why that's included because it shouldn't be a part of the approved plan at this point unless Baypoint owns it. I, I don't know that they do yet.
To answer that question, Charles, so I have registry four right here. Again, we have the same problem where we've got a, a chunk of our Starboard Drive parcel is connecting into Baypoint Drive. So obviously, we have that, what we'll call in the CETA property is on sheet R four. But again, we have Starboard Drive that we're recording as part of phase two and three, which is.
Then I, I would not, I would not recommend that you call that a lot number.
We did inform.
Reflects a similar lot number with the subdivision plan.
Yep.
But that you simply call it as now, whatever it is, now formally whoever owns it.
Correct, yeah, now formally Wareham Economic Development and Industrial Corporation.
All right, well, just, just put it in there as in a budding owner and, and not with a parcel number because it's not a part of the approval.
Right.
The only thing that is, is the, is the layout connection onto Baypoint Drive.
Which is why we have a solid thick dash line, thick line, solid line, not.
I understand all of that, I'm just saying, let's eliminate any suggestion that that lot is a part of the approval because it isn't, that's all.
The preference would be it's just a budding property.
It is an budding owner, just the same as other people are in the plan. So if they can do that, then the plan can stay in the set.
So this illustrates the same intersection as what was previously approved or the new one depending on?
That, that's the existing layout of Baypoint Drive from a conversation I've had with Tom. What that little piece in the corner shows is the very tail end of the construction or the layout of Starboard Drive where it connects into the existing layout of Baypoint. If we go to the next phase at some point, that's all going to change. But for right now, it needs to have that connection. Initially, it had no connection, now it does. So at least temporarily, it's tying into the existing layout of Baypoint Drive. And again, so long as it's, so long as the EDC parcel is not noted in such a way that it implies it's a part of this approval, I don't mind that it's part of the plan set because you need it for the connection and details of dimensions.
Mr. Chair, going back to the previous approved plan, it's the same scenario where we're tying it to Starboard Drive into Baypoint Drive. So, and here's the economic development parcel.
So anyone else like to address this project? See anybody? So you need some time to review these.
Yeah, I, I need some time to put something formal together and just check over a few things that I didn't have a time to do today. Plus, I would like to discuss with Tom the, the pump station issue. I'm not fully understanding how everything, how that all goes together, whether we're swapping pumps at the time that, that next piece goes in, I don't know how that's all going to fit together. So I need to talk about it with him.
What are you thinking? Well, not the tenth now, can you have that done by June tenth?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a month away.
I'm sure they'll want to give a response back to your comments.
Can we, can we do it at the next meeting?
That would be the next meeting.
June tenth is the next meeting, right?
Because of Memorial Day.
Oh, okay.
Anything specific in what addressed?
Yes, Shorty, it has to be released?
Excuse me? Uh, that's a different deal on this, it's not a public, part of the public hearing, no, not.
Yes, please.
Second. Hall and Paver?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item is a special permit, site plan review, continued public hearing for Wareham Retail Management.
You ordered breakfast, huh?
We appreciate your patience, knowing this is a, a hearing-heavy meeting for you guys and it's getting late and I ask your indulgence to stick with us. I'm Lindsay Wilson, I'm counsel for the applicant. With me tonight, as always, Derek Redgate, High Point Engineering, the project engineer. Sean Kelly from Vaness Associates, our traffic engineer as well. Just give you a, a refresher because it's been a while since we've been before you of where we've been and how we've gotten here and hopefully where we go. We had filed our site plan, special permit application in February after taking two preliminary meetings with both Ken and Charlie and some other representatives in town, police and fire included, to get some preliminary feedback. We then had our initial public hearing on March eleventh. In between that meeting date and the twenty-fifth, we had gotten peer review consultants' comments and were able to come back and respond on March twenty-fifth. Walked through those comments with you, commit to making a number of changes to the plan. Because of some schedules, including my own and some others, we had opted to not meet on the eighth and carried over to April twenty-second. Unfortunately, we learned shortly before the twenty-second that that coincided with Wareham's town meeting. So we had lost that date, but we had submitted on the fifteenth of April our revised plans. And two weeks ago, we had a sit down with Ken, board member Daskalakis had come as well to provide some thoughts and feedback. Charlie Rowley was not able to attend that meeting and we had only gotten comments on the revised plans. And police were there as well. We got comments over the weekend and did try today to have some discussions based on the comments that we had gotten on the revised plans, make some commitments to make further changes as conditions to a potential approval. So I'm going to turn it over to Derek to walk through the revised plans, both things that we had already done in response to the initial comments, both from the board and from Charlie, and then also indicate the things that we're willing to commit to do in a revised, further revised draft as a approval condition.
So as Lindsay mentioned, this is a revised plan in response to Mr. Rowley's initial comments. Some of the significant changes that we made is towards the top of the plan, we removed two rows of parking, which I think equaled twenty-six spaces. So subsequently, that also helped, allowed us to remove one of the access entrances to the site as towards the top of the plan. We also, just one comment also on that. In addition to the revised plans, we had sent a proposed draft decision based on prior decisions approving this same development on the same site, only a larger scale development. And one of the things that we had included is that we would have to come back to this board before we would be able to build out what we've marked as potential future parking spaces that we took off. So that is based on either need driven by any change to the bylaw or if we did restaurant use that had a higher parking count than just straight retail or if there was demand that we saw, we still would have to come back to this board. So what's marked as potential future is not buildable without this board's permission.
Right, thank you. And the other minor change or somewhat significant changes, the building number one to the lower left corner, we, we moved that over twenty, thirty feet, revised the parking. This allowed some, some of the topics we had talked about, site circulation, where if you came off Seth Toby Road, that going into that first area was possibly problematic. So we moved the building over, rearranged some parking and we made that a one-way entrance and it also gave some more room away from the, from the Walmart entrance. There were some other minor changes, but those were the, the major changes that we made between our original application and then response to Mr. Rowley's comments. We, subsequently to that, we have received comments, again, just, there was a couple of other minor changes that we had discussed in our sit down with Ken. I don't know if we had highlighted which comments came, came out of that. The walkway.
Yeah, we, there was a walkway that connected, let me stand up and show you.
So it's not reflected on this plan because we changed it from our original plan and the original comments was to remove a walkway that connected the parking area and these internal walkways to the crosswalk at the intersection. So we removed that and these plans, we've subsequently talked to Ken about it. Where, we don't care, we like to put it in, we think it has benefit, but as of this plan, it's removed. But I think you talked to Ken, we were going to put it back in. What was the, oh, there was one other.
Uh, two way, the one-way, two-way.
The two-way, yeah. So in between the first and second rendition, we felt in response to the board's comments that more, the circulation through the site would, if we could do some things to the circulation that promote users to use this entrance and exit more often. circulation that promote users to use this entrance and exit more often, we would like to go do that. So we made the main entrance from here a one-way. That's changed from the original, which we had, is two-way. We've had some discussion about it, so we'd like to most likely go back to that being two-way, on Ken's recommendation.
What was the reasoning behind that?
Uh, because that's a key point between a number of different parking areas, and it's a short distance, and it's going to be violated on a regular basis for our parking, so there's no particular reason to suggest that it be one-way. When it's wide enough to be two-way.
And we're willing to do either. We put it in there just to continue to try to push the flow towards the far entrance, but it being the central kind of traffic point, Ken felt having it be two-way is made the most practical sense.
So those are the highlights of what's changed between the first rendition and the second rendition. As Lindsay mentioned, we've received comments over the weekend from Mr. Rowley. We obviously didn't have enough time to formally address them. We've had some email back and forth. A majority of them, we feel, were technical and, you know, engineering plan-oriented, and I don't think we have any issue with any of those technical comments. They can be addressed in perhaps the final round of site plans that are approved. And I guess, in this situation where we haven't made the changes, that would be open to Charlie's final, or Charlie's latest response comments being part of the condition of approval. We would...
Those that are technical plan comments, there's a few that were more design or conceptual that we've discussed previously with the board, the orientation of the whole development layout, which we had talked with the board last time we were here, and then two weeks ago in our follow-up sit-down, it discussed further, and that the reorientation inward-facing is, you know, more of a design concept that our client feels strongly is, makes the site far, far less marketable. They've already committed to their kickoff tenant, the orientation of the middle building, so that it's not something that we could go back on.
Have you acquired any other tenants since...
So there's definitely, it's one of those things that we couldn't announce until there was a signed lease, but there's both several potential users. And two weeks from now is the National Retailer Conference in Las Vegas, known as ICSE, where we're hoping a couple of those deals will get finalized. So, and part of our reasoning, and I've been talking with Ken today, both because we just had some unfortunate timing with town meeting, now the prospect of Memorial Day and some other dates, that we are hoping to ask the board for a conditional approval vote, is also because two weeks from now, we're hoping to finalize a couple of tenant deals as well, that not having a site plan approval makes much more difficult. That's all I have, yeah.
So, any other national tenants we'll bring in besides to these other buildings?
Everything that...
That'll be oriented much the way Aspen Devil is.
Uh, the orientation would be as the design layout shows. The architecture would have to be consistent with what we've submitted to you as conceptual architecture, or we'd have to come back. So that's the other aspect. We're more than happy to accept the condition that, on the other two buildings, where we didn't have, you know, the tenant in hand to show the same level of design, approval can be conditioned on us coming back for that as well.
Any other comments of concern? Is there any further comments on the traffic patterns?
Uh, we had discussed with the police representative, whose name is escaping me right now...
Uh, George.
Yes. His only comment from a traffic perspective was to explore with Mast DOT the possibility of changing the yield sign to a stop sign, where Cranberry Highway meets where the proposed walkway would be, which we're more than willing to do. And in fact, I think we might have even already started those discussions.
We've had some preliminary discussions with DOT's district office on that, on that front. We'll likely be submitting the measure as part of our highway access permit application, and then if they're in favor of it, it would be part of that application approval.
You referred to the yield sign, the one on 28?
Right, so what happens is today, when this was designed, the intent was to not have the self-right turn movement from Craver to Highway onto Toby Road around a signal, because for most drivers, it's a relatively free movement. What happens, because it's yield control, a lot of the time, there's no conflicting movement, where cars come around and spend in a fairly good clip, which could be a contributing factor in some of the collisions that you see at the main driveway. So the idea was instead of having it be yield control, replace that instead with the stop control, so that when it comes down, make that bend, as to come to a complete stop. So the speed, you take around the corner in a slower clip, and it creates a safer environment. Again, it's a DOT call. They'll ultimately decide if they want to implement that measure, but it's something we'll propose as part of our, of our application for the project.
I can see a lot of rear-end collisions.
Well, that's, that's, that's the, that's the trade-off, right? And I think that's some of the initial feedback.
Right, is it traffic calming, or would it actually create more congestion, so?
You're recommending a crosswalk there?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk on the, on the plans on Cranberry Highway, and this would make the connection into the...
Yeah, there's, what, there's one today?
So you're saying right at the main intersection?
Well, there's a one that's already there. What he had proposed is for everything that's actually on our property to create a pedestrian walk to meet up with that crosswalk.
Down?
Yeah. That crosswalk was shown on the original plan. I'm talking about the crosswalk that was out at the intersection of Toby and Cranberry Highway. My recommendation was to take it out, because coming from their side, there's no control over that. And it just seemed to me that with the traffic flow, the way that it goes, that's just asking for trouble to somebody to step out in there and end up standing in the middle of that aisle, waiting for the traffic light to change. With respect to the, the stop sign, replacing the yield sign, I don't think that's the problem. I think the problem is further on. I've taken notice of that in the last few days as I travel that area. A lot of the traffic that comes to Walmart comes from Cranberry Highway South, making the turn into Toby Road. And in order to get to Walmart, they have to cross lanes to get to the right lane, which was intended to be a right-turn lane into Walmart. Whereas the turn coming from Cranberry Highway North onto Toby Road goes straight ahead, so that at some point, those two cars have to do this in order to get from going onto Toby Road, either south on Toby Road or to the right in Walmart. One thing that I thought of was simply the elimination of that right-turn lane that goes into Walmart, so that there's no potential for cross-movements. That's what happens today. I had it happen in front of me. When somebody turns to the left to go onto Toby, and they want to go to Walmart, they have to cut in front of me in order to make that turn, because the lane that I'm traveling in, coming south from 28 onto Toby, is the inside lane. So it means that cars have to make that transition. It's not the best. One other thing I thought of, and I'm not, I'm not a traffic consultant, so I haven't looked into it in great amount of detail, would be to eliminate that turn completely and have them stop, just like they have to do at the main intersection for down at the Wareham Crossing. People come out of there, or you go in there, you have to come to a stop before you can get in there. That's a major change, obviously, to the intersection. But to change the yield sign to a stop line and not consider what's happening with those cross-movements, I don't think does anything to help out the safety issue.
We're only talking about what's within our control. Obviously, that intersection being a larger-scale town issue that affects multiple sites is not the subject of this hearing. We're not at all being dismissive that traffic needs to improve there or could improve. We're just simply proposing that we're willing to work on what we can control, whatever is either the board's purview or Mast DOT's, so.
See, I would disagree, because your occupancy of your building will dictate the foot traffic and behavior, and the road traffic in that intersection. As I said last time you were here, we, we have to think of your project, but we have to think about four projects ahead of you. Right now, the lot's being developed for a drive-through restaurant on that side. The Maxi gas gets converted to a New England Farms or a high-traffic gas station there. Soon after that, two more developments are going to be done. So we need to be thinking, we as a board need to be thinking about what this looks like for developments ahead of us.
No, I, I absolutely...
If Applebee's there, and somebody's walking from a gas station to an Applebee's to a Wendy's, I almost hit a guy coming out of Walmart, walking, because there is no intersection, there's no crosswalk across Toby Road, period.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, there is, actually.
Where is it?
At the main intersection.
At the main intersection.
The intersection of Cranberry Highway?
No, no. Toby Road across to Wareham Crossing, between Wareham Marketplace and Walmart, there's a crosswalk there.
We can show you on the plan.
It's on the road?
Yeah.
We're not at all saying that...
It's right here.
You shouldn't account for our project when looking at the aggregate of Walmart's traffic, the traffic from, you know, the development across the way. We're just saying that intersection is a larger issue than simply this permit, and we had given you information regarding what our daily expected trips would be, and as a percentage of the overall congestion is infinitesimal compared to the overall development there.
There is a crossing, I mean, we're crossing of 28 and Toby Road, within the signal itself, a signalized crossing.
Well, I'm talking about now, further down at the auto zone, I'm talking about that end, there's no, there is no crosswalk there?
No, no, I mean, the intent was to have a cross at the signalized location where it's safe to cross.
And what I'm going to, what I'm going to say is, after the fast-food restaurant is in there, people are going to gravitate towards the auto zone and the Walmart exit point to cross in between the two plazas.
There's no pedestrian crosswalk there, though.
Right. We're not, we're not looking to promote crossings there at all.
We're happy to not include the pedestrian walkway to the crosswalk if you think that is going to encourage dangerous crossing.
There, so, so, not to speak to you, gentlemen, I just want to speak to the board for a minute. My concern is, is that we start with a blank canvas here of property, and we start putting units in one by one. We're not going to have any control to come back and extract money for change. There's no way for us to do this. So we can't, we can't control Mast DOT on Cranberry Highway, but we can control the behavior on Toby Road, because the town manages that road. Without the funding, we're not going to be able to make corrections on here. So, so, in theory, this is my theory, Mark's theory, is there should be a bond that's held for, for the future on the final build-out of what this all looks like, so that we have some funding to work with on correcting this. Because once we come back after little more properties are developed there, this is, this is not $10,000 fixes here, this is hundred thousands of dollars, two million-dollar fixes to correct a road problem. And, you know, if we look at that whole intersection in, in, in the Walmart, and how it narrows down, and the telephone poles on both sides of the road, this is what I said last time we were here. It can't, it can't just be a decision based on this development, it has to be based on four had, four passed it, on what this whole thing looks like. That, that is my concern. I have no objection to these buildings, but what we can't forecast is who occupies these buildings. We, we said this last time, there's a difference between a bank drive-through and a Wendy's drive-through. There's a difference between an Applebee's and a dental unit. It's going to dictate the volume of traffic in and out, it's going to dictate the amount of parking spots, and we don't have a crystal ball to look into, and we don't have this unlimited bank account. We only have a blank checkbook to write checks with no money in the bank from. So, that's my concern.
Just, just to address one or two things with respect to our development, there are some controls. First of all, there's zoning. You know, it has to be retail office or restaurant, on the restaurant side, at least for parking expansion. We've already said we'd come back before you. We're happy to make that a carte blanche condition of any restaurant use. We'd have to come back before you, which would give you another bite at the apple. We have a committed tenant on a long-term lease that is the least traffic-generating potential use of anything that's going to come into a retail development, which is this dental office. It's going to be less traffic than any other retail use in that area. Not at all dismissing the bigger-picture issues here, but we're only able to address our own site plan. Happy to discuss conditions coming back. Really, we're talking about a kickoff office building of, you know, a couple thousand square feet, when we're talking about payment for redesigning an entire intersection, when Walmart's hundreds of thousands of retail feet, let alone the hundreds of thousands of other retail feet across the street. You know, I'd ask that you not start that planning process with us.
I just, I just add, just one quick thing, is that when, you know, looking back at some of the paperwork, when I did my original research on this, is Walmart, when it was first contemplated, a development in this L-shaped lot was always part of what was applied for in the original application for Walmart. They were always referred to as the out parcels. So the, the traffic generation and the utilities and, and all that was, was sort of pre-planned and pre-engineered for this to happen, what they probably thought in 2010 to be very soon after. So there's, there's water pipe stubs, there's a sewer pipe stub. The intersections were, this, development on this site was contemplated.
And approved twice before as well. But just a thought here is, there is an annual traffic report requirement under the Walmart approval that they've been deficient on, where I would think, because I've sat in your seats, would be a point of leverage to the 800-pound gorilla to say, you're not giving us, you know, sufficient updates on your traffic, and you are the main contributor to traffic at this intersection. And so then having a, you know, calling Walmart in, and calling them on the carpet to have that discussion, rather than have the out parcel drive the 800-pound gorilla.
Your locus of sight, is that the actual lot line, or is that, because the little jog around the intersection?
I'm going to defer to the engineer.
Can I approach your, look at it?
Reason I ask is if it might be possible to do some signage over there to direct people to that driveway?
Yeah, I think we've called for it on the plan already, and we certainly are committed to the directional signage.
That is our lot line. This, this is, this is the actual physical lot. There's nothing contemplated.
I'm just wondering if it's possible to put signage over here that would divert, call attention to this driveway?
Yeah, that would be similar situation with Mast DOT.
Right, I think the idea, if I'm, if I'm hearing you right.
The approach to this internal intersection, whether it's one-way or two-way, it could be signed to say, to 105, 28, direct to the right turn handle, or, 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 secondary sign here, direct traffic, 105, self, off the driveway.
Yeah, if it's along the public way, we need Mast DOT approval. If it's within our parcel, directing traffic internally, we certainly can commit to those kinds of signage.
I know that one always slips by me, and I find myself, I thought some additional, something to catch people's eye, to remind them they have an easier entrance there than... Are your proposed conditions, is that what you put in there?
This is the, you have a draft?
I have an extra one if anyone wants it, needs it.
In your packets, you'll find a copy of the draft special permit decision.
So, just note that that draft, we had circulated about 10 days ago, something like that, so it doesn't contemplate incorporating Charlie's plan revisions, which we're happy to have added as an additional comment. A few of his comments were to request plans that had either been forwarded and not forwarded on to Charlie or that Derek had subsequently provided, the architecials, I think, in particular. But any of the plan detail revisions, we're more than happy to commit to making those plan revisions.
Yeah, there weren't any, any comments on plan revisions that, that we disagreed with providing.
Even if you, just to be kind of overly inclusive, if you wanted to say, subject to our need to come back before, we would break ground on the second building to ensure that the plan revisions were done in an acceptable manner, something like that. So, we can't do anything other than commence construction on the dental building until you would have another opportunity to review. We can do that as well.
One of the things that I had recommended in the revision to this draft decision was to add in that the proposed development of the two other buildings that don't have specified uses would be considered a substantial modification, and so, subject to a public meeting and a majority vote of the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, that, that basically gives you the catch-all to have us come back and need your further approval to, to build the second and third building, so in order to try to expedite the dental building, we're willing to agree to that.
Site work as well? Would you do site work for the entire project as planned?
The site work necessary for the middle building, the dental building, we would need the right to put that infrastructure in.
Wouldn't need to do site work past that, other than the parking lot.
No, just, I guess, to pad-ready, but that's, that's it.
I recommend also that the where on fire district water department letter of April 29th be referenced in the decision as well.
That's fine. You want that under the chronology?
Same way that referencing consulting engineers' comments, that we also reference the comments of the water department.
I think we generally put a statement that conditions of approvals of any other town and district boards be out of the decision.
That's fine.
The entire project only has a promoted or estimated sewer flow of 900 gallons per day? Or is that just the Aspen Dell?
900 gallons per day is the, of all three.
All three? So, you're going to be limited to whatever that flow is for the capacity of the sewer for anything going forward unless this modification is made.
Yeah, we would, you know, right, the, there are no plans to do anything more significant.
And it's based on what, just arbitrary retail space?
It's based on retail space, yes.
I mean, we'd love a cushion, we're just being honest with what our calcs were. I think the development itself was allocated up to 12,000 gallons per day back when it was contemplated as part of the Walmart development.
Yeah, it's 10% of, of, it's 10% of what two restaurants.
Yeah, so hopefully, actually, the town should get a decent amount of capacity back based on our calcs.
In keeping with our more recent protocol, I would think that we'd also want a signature block on the site plans, the approved site plan, so that the planning board can identify the plan as the one that's approved.
Yeah, we anticipate addressing the latest comments with one more set of plans, and on that set of plans, we'll include signature blocks on all of them? Is that how you typically do it? Or just on the cover?
Well, we haven't typically done it, so.
Oh, yeah, we haven't typically done it, okay. We've worked with towns where it goes on every single plan, so.
I don't think George wants to sign that much.
If you want to sign all the plans, yeah. The cover sheet might be
Sufficient.
Sufficient, right.
If there's room.
There's room.
Emmanuel didn't have any comments on the elevations or the facade?
He accepted the particular architecture that was proposed.
On the approved plans, what do you mean by as-built plans? How much detail are you expecting on those?
I
It's number 13 on page four of seven on the proposed conditions.
Well, there are, this references building departments, which would tell me, building department being looking for a different set of as-bills than possibly the sewer department or what else would have need to go into there to repair something. What detail in your projects you, I would imagine you'd put actual stuff on?
Yeah, we, well, you know, if a project gets built to plan, we'll make the adjustments in, on each one of those individual plans to show what was actually built. And then, at the end of the project, we submit a stamped as-built. The other way you can do it is you could have an entire, if, if too many things change, we have a land surveyor come back and he basically does a land survey on the, on the built plans, and that is your as-built. So, there's two different ways to do it.
Well, you also, you have to, your underground utilities and stuff all have to be, you're not going to
Yeah, they, they can move a little bit and the inverts change, so we, we modify that so that the town, the as-built plan is what's actually constructed.
I don't know on something of this scale, are they strictly with the building department? I imagine the sewer layout goes to the sewer department and a lot gets copied, but I don't know.
I don't know that that happened before. I know that they did take some details of it. I don't know what the water department or the sewer department required for information. In terms of the sewer department, sewer manholes typically are brought to grade anyway, so you can pretty well tell where sewer manholes are and what the inverts of pipe are and so forth. That's why I'm suggesting that maybe it already spelled out as to who wants what, rather than make the assumption.
Well, it's, it's all a part of property, so I would imagine the most important thing is they know where it is.
No, but informing the town of the location as well, yeah.
Which we will do.
You're right, the, usually towns are worried about the connections that we're making in the, in the town right-of-way. In this case, we don't, we don't have any because
Because they're already stopped.
It was left over from, from the Walmart.
What specific guidelines are defined in I T E for when regular deliveries and trash pickup should be made?
I'm not aware of any I T E guidelines for that. It's typically, a town may have bylaws that you adhere to, but there's no
I'm just, I'm just reading item 21 in the conditions.
Oh, I haven't repeated those.
Just flipping to it. It would be from a template.
I am, I am opposed to
This was
Item 22. Excuse me, go ahead.
Okay. 21 was a condition from the last approval, site plan approval, special permit for this location. I'm not sure what guidelines would apply, but I didn't want to take it out without, I erred on the side of overly inclusive, so to the extent, we can put to the extent applicable. If there are guidelines, we certainly will adhere to them.
I just didn't know how the Institute of Traffic Engineers got involved in it, that's all. But I am, I am opposed to item 22.
You are opposed to item 22?
Absolutely.
Institute of Trash Engineers.
Yeah. I had asked for soil evaluation to be done in my initial report. As of this date, those soil tests have not been done. I know what they'll probably find, but I don't think it's appropriate for the approval of this project be conditioned upon something happened just in advance of construction. Suppose something is found that alters the construction or alters the design of the system somehow. I don't want to be responsible for saying that's okay. That testing should be done now, and it should be done before any approval is given.
You can start, go ahead.
I agree, and we, we talked about this on the phone back around the time of the first, first comment letter, and there's a little bit of time it takes us to plan it, organize it. Weather's been a big issue this spring, so we have that on our, on our schedule to do within the next couple of weeks, which will be well before construction. I think one of the things that typically happen is, yes, it gets put in the, in an approval as a condition, and the project doesn't do it until they break actual ground for the project, which is much, much too late. In this case, we're going to try to do it within the next couple of weeks and provide that to you, and if there's any red flags, which we don't anticipate.
And the other, the other basis was because this is new development, not redevelopment of an area that might have had other soil issues, and because there had been soil testing done in connection with Walmart, and because this is generally sandy, good soils for construction, that we felt like the chances of there being anything deleterious that was found was low enough to make it a condition. We still can't move forward without doing the testing.
We had some, we had some testing at various locations around the site to make us feel very confident. I think what Charlie and I discussed was, it's good engineering practice to have the actual test right at where you're going to infiltrate stormwater, so that's what we're going to do. We're going to do two, I forget if it was two or three, tests right in the exact location of where we're proposing the infiltration.
I did see some coring and drilling.
From, from previous, right?
There's nothing been done out there recently.
It was over six months. There's our machine out there drilling something.
Probably doing some preliminary, probably some preliminary test borings for maybe foundation design or something like that. But, you know, we run into this all the time. It should not be one of those last-minute things. It takes a backhoe, 500 bucks a day, plus a guy to go out there who knows what he's looking at, to make some test results and get it done.
I mean, we're happy, we're happy to commit.
And I just don't like to see this come in and be, well, we'll do it when construction starts. No way, it's not going to happen.
I mean, we'd commit to doing it within the next two weeks and report back the results to both Charlie and Ken prior to the next meeting, as opposed to waiting another month because we're going to miss another meeting date.
Couldn't we put some sort of a time buffer in between the date that they return the results to you and a date where they could put a shovel on the ground and begin, to give you time to, a comfortable amount of time to, to review it?
We'll do it within the next two weeks and do no other work until we do it.
It's, it's all based, it's all based on an assumption right now. All the drainage calculations is based on an assumption. I have no reason to believe that they're going to be in for any surprises. That's not the issue. I've done enough tests throughout town in 35 or 40 years to know what's there in most cases, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that you can be in for surprises, so you never know. But it simply is good engineering practice to have that information done right at the very beginning, so you know what you've got, and not make assumptions that can't be backed up. So, you know, I, I probably sound like a real stick in the mud on this, but it's just normal stuff to be done, and I just don't want to see it become the normal thing to happen. As a matter of fact, I had thought about making some suggestions to the planning board to put some changes in the, in the planning board rules and regs and your site plan regs to be sure that it's a part of the initial information that comes into you, simply for that reason. If they can get it done in two weeks, fine. I'm going to wait until I get the results before I send anything else to you to affirm that the drainage calculations are appropriate, that the runoff calculations work for the soil conditions that are found, and then we'll go through whatever changes they've made with respect to the documentation I put together here.
I'm assuming it would only work against them to start planning construction and having equipment showing up only to sit there.
Oh, sure.
We, we wouldn't do it otherwise, but
So, the sooner, the sooner the better for a number of reasons, and I'm sure that even if it, it's going to be a while before they could even begin anyway, because
Has to be recorded, appeal period.
You've got an appeal period, you've got some time, but you've got time between now and the next meeting to get that done. You're going to be meeting on, I think your next meeting you said was June 11th?
10th.
June 10th?
But then there would be
So, that information is done between now and then, and they get the information to me to where I can verify it all, then I can report to you that everything is okay.
But then we lose an additional entire month, whereas we're committing to do this work in the next two weeks, report back the results. But then we lose an additional entire month, whereas we're committing to do this work in the next two weeks, report back the results. If there's anything that is objectionable, if the soils aren't what the assumptions were, we can't go forward without coming back before the board.
Aren't you gonna have to do that anyway?
A bit of a unique case where.
Could we resolve this by adding before a building permit is granted?
Nope, it's too late.
Before any, any work is done on site?
No, because you can, you can start and do it the day before, the guy pulls up in there with a truck and he's gonna start digging holes. No.
You can, you could say, without Ken Buckland's sign-off, and he's not gonna sign off till he talks to Charlie. I mean, our issue, quite frankly, is if we had known that this was a condition of even a vote, we would have pushed things along further.
I think to, to back up Charlie's concerns, I do remember him asking for these soil tests in the past. So this isn't a new request.
No, not at all, and I had submitted this two weeks ago as a condition. I just, I didn't hear, no, it needs to be done before a vote. And I'm just in a tight situation as far as our construction schedule, trying to get things moving on this kickoff building. We're more than happy to commit to do this before anything goes forward. But to wait an additional month, missing yet another meeting because of the calendar, having to wait through the appeal period again, now we're into July, where we can give a covenant to the board that we're gonna do this work before anything else and still move forward with that timetable just seems like a reasonable accommodation.
Additional soil testing and any resulting redesign be completed by June first?
Absolutely.
That work for you?
I guess you're gonna have to put it in your conditions of approval.
Any, any other items other than the review back and forth that you have outstanding?
George, just, just item thirteen. It's saying that the project plans were reviewed by me and found to be compliant. If you sign this tonight, it'll be over my objection because I'm not satisfied with the full plans.
Which show, oh, in thirteen as far as.
Page three. It's on page three of the proposed special, yeah.
It says they were reviewed and commented on by Charles Rowley. And we've committed to revise the plans based on his further comments.
Well, you can put the soil testing results right into that condition as well. Double mention it.
The name Wareham Marketplace, is that your intention in calling the, your particular cluster of buildings?
Is it working title?
Though, I think the Wareham Marketplace is left over from the template from the decision.
I've heard the client actually talk about it, no? That's how he refers to it, to me. Does it matter? Do we need to identify a name or is the address?
I just think it makes it confusing.
Name of the competing center across the street?
They call it across the street?
Well, that's probably why the client refers to it as that, cause there's a big sign that says that. Wareham Retail Development.
That's not a snappy name. It's not, I'm sorry, just look at contracts all day. Is it Wareham Retail Management or you just said development, so was you just?
As far as the title is concerned, Wareham Retail Management LLC is the owner of the property and the applicant.
Which is how we referred to them on the plans, so if you wanted the plans to be consistent with the decision.
I would just keep it consistent.
Okay, then Wareham Retail Management.
LLC, yeah, nomenclature. Just need a wicked smart lawyer from Harvard to tell you.
To cross-reference that, you're right.
You're a lawyer as well?
No.
No? You were spared?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at number thirteen in the findings.
Because the findings are that there's, there's still modifications to be made based on the, the new conference of consulting engineer, Charles Rowley.
I don't, I don't see a way to rectify that other than strike it.
Strike it.
Put it in the conditions that you have to meet his approval.
Without the, without the soil testing, that statement doesn't apply.
Yeah, I can't see a way to reword it other than to strike it and put it in the conditions that you will conduct the.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not just thinking of that. There, there are other things that I put into my letter of Saturday that need to be addressed. That was my thought, just strike thirteen.
That's fine.
Anything further? If there's nothing, I would look for a motion. Are you prepared to close the public hearing?
George, is this, is this a four-member positive vote?
Yes, you will need a four-vote.
I'm, I'm, I'm not of the opinion that I would vote in the affirmative, so don't look to me for a motion.
I mean, it has to be because there's a, a board member missing. It would have to be unanimous if, if, first of all, I appreciate you at least expressing that before there'd be a binding vote. I mean, our, our goal and objective tonight was to get a conditional approval due to having lost a month, about to lose another half a month. We certainly would rather have this pushed further than get a negative outcome. We can commit to providing the revised plans and the soil calcs within the next ten days, two weeks, what have you, and working closely, and Ken can attest that, you know, we've reached out on every occasion. We tried to sit down two weeks ago so that everything was worked out and gone over ahead of time, but unfortunately, the consultant wasn't available. We didn't get comments till Saturday night, so, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to meet a very difficult client schedule and hopefully work with you guys collaboratively.
I, I appreciate your schedule. I mean, I get it. You're trying to put something in place so that you can sit down with clients and potentially find tenants for the other two buildings.
And also to get the clock running on appeal period, et cetera, because all those factors that we could try to work in parallel track then delay us until well into the end of July.
My, my, my concern is, is that we rely very heavily on Charlie's expertise. And I do remember the request for the soil samples at least once in past meetings. And the fact that they weren't presented to him just kinda gives me pause. If they were done when requested, we really wouldn't even be having this discussion.
I mean, if, if that is the only thing, can we commit to having them done in the next three working days? I just, I've had, I've had so many outreaches to the team and not had one word of saying, where are we at with the soil testing? I know it's on us, we're the applicant, we're asking you for something, you have no obligation to us. That said, this is a collaborative effort of, you know, us coming to town, hopefully to provide something that is an amenity to town as well as to increase taxes, et cetera. So, you know, in this one point where hopefully there's, you know, room, if that is truly the only thing.
Yeah, I mean, I had to add.
I will get in the, in the truck and do it myself.
We can expedite it. We, we do sites like this all the time, and one of our very first things we do is the soil testing. However, you don't know exactly where you need to test the soils until you know exactly where you're gonna put your stormwater. In this case, we inherited an incredible amount of information on this site, including, I think, three separate layouts, two of which were approved by this board in the past. And with that information, previous consultants had done soil testing.
Twice.
Right, so we had this information and it was very, it was very positive information. Sometimes we see soil tests that have a lot of silt and clay and we question how we're gonna do things, but the soil tests were, were positive out here. When, when we discussed it, we agree that to dot the i's and cross the t's, that actual deep hole test pits should be done exactly where the water's gonna infiltrate. We, we agree with that, but we were very confident that this project was unique in the sense that we had a lot of information to begin with. So I think, I think that's part of, part of the story here. You know, that, that we're very confident that the soil testing will, will be, you know, adequate for our, for our uses. And that's the reason why that wasn't one of the very first things that we did here.
Just to be clear, it's not the only thing that I had some concerns about, because when I put my comments together in the last letter, I looked at what the response was, looked at the plan to see if they had done all of the changes that I had asked for. Majority of them were, but the list that is in my latest letter suggests that there are other things that needed to be changed or adjusted appropriately. So it's those things in addition to the soil that I need to be able to report to you and said, yeah, my concerns are, have been taken care of. So it's not just that. And I must reiterate that it was one of the first things that I mentioned in my original review. And when I looked at the soils, not the soils report, the stormwater report, it says that the testing would be done by April fifteenth. That was a month ago. So there's no excuse in my book.
I, I, like I said, I, I can't help but feel like the pressure is being put on us to give you something that you need so that you can go and sell square footage. When had the soil samples been supplied when requested, you'd probably be on your way with the approval that you want.
I mean, I can't, I'm ringing the bell and I, I respect what you're saying. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna agree to disagree because I'm not gonna look to throw anyone under the bus or what have you. It just seems to me like something that we could, at this juncture, quickly satisfy, seeing as less than three years ago on the exact site, the exact testing's already been done, and three years before that as well, and the soils came out fine and we're committing to do them immediately. But again, I'd far rather deal with an unhappy client than an unhappy board. You have been gracious tonight in considering a conditional approval. So I've pushed as far as I think your patience will allow, and I certainly would appreciate a continuance rather than a denial.
I could just add one, one more thing, is that this site is not, this is not a max capacity maximize a square footage project. In fact, the two projects before this were significantly more. The changes to the parking that we've made eliminates a significant amount of impervious area where we've maintained the sizes of our three stormwater infiltration areas. So in a sense, we haven't modified our infiltration areas to be smaller because we've, we've lessened the impervious area. That's another sort of factor of safety, if you will, in this design. You know, hedging problems with our, with the soil testing. And had we known this was gonna be an issue, we would have gone out there and, and we don't.
I mean, we had to sit down.
We don't wanna go have six meetings.
No, we had to sit down two weeks ago to go over the revised plans and to say, is there absolutely anything of significance that needs to be done in order for us to get a vote at the next meeting? Here's a few plan changes, and Charlie has to get his comments in, which we got Saturday night. So, you know, if I had two pre-filing meetings, sitting down to try to get conceptual, larger comments so that we come in with as polished a plan as we can, we, we have really tried to head off issues ahead of time. But again, the comment had been made previously and certainly the soil testing could have been done, so that's on us.
One last comment, and then we can move forward. Charlie, when you say a, a deep hole soil test?
Yeah.
You just talked about a, a backhoe and an eight-foot hole?
Yeah, generally, a test hole for, for soil evaluation, for doing this type of thing is twelve feet deep.
So not.
Like a regular backhoe, you don't need a big excavator, it's a rubber tied backhoe.
Not, not, not unsimilar to testing for location of a septic system or leach.
Exactly the same. You're doing almost the same thing.
Why, and I'm, I'm speaking from immediate experience because I've just done a new septic system on a property I just purchased. From the time I made the phone call till the time that the dirt was out of the ground was forty-eight hours. Why would it take ten days to pull that off? Why couldn't you commit to having that to Charlie by Friday?
We can. I'm not the guy who would actually do the work. I'm a lawyer, not an engineer, but.
Ten, ten days.
I'm happy to commit to two days.
We'd have to.
Weather permitting.
Typically, we find a landscaper that will meet us out there. They have a daily fee.
The only reason I suggested June first was to give, if there was changes to be made, the engineering could be done, it could be reviewed and.
Right, but what I'm saying is if they could get the samples to Charlie by Friday, that gives him the appropriate amount of time to make his recommendations, rather than give him ten days to get the samples to him and shortening his window to work with them. I mean, I just know how quick it was, and I'm a nobody. I mean, I'm just a guy with a phone. I picked it up. I said, hey, I need a hole dug, and it was done.
Yeah, we have licensed two or three people in our office that are licensed to do, actually do the tests, so that's no problem.
I can guarantee someone would be there tomorrow if we were able to move forward.
I think that we're beyond satisfying Delta Dental, right? We've satisfied them with Aspen Dental. Sorry.
No, not, not, not till we have a site plan approval.
But the design, I mean, the basic footprint and layout is, is agreeable to everyone, right? The building design, the signage is agreeable to us all. I don't think anybody's objecting to that. It would, we're, it's a procedural issue that we're having here on whether this should have been addressed.
It's engineering what, what.
Yeah, so, I mean.
It's just, it's not just that. Get away from the test holes for a little bit. There are still some issues that need to be addressed technically with the details on the plan for construction.
But we've committed to making those changes to the plans.
Yeah, they're, they're minor things, but nevertheless, they need to be done. And then, at the same time, the dates for those plans, assuming that they're updated, need to be incorporated into your special permit somehow. You don't want to have today's plan since I know there will be some changes. So, you need to incorporate that as well.
I mean, we, all I can say is that we have agreed as a condition to satisfy his subsequent comments. You and I had talked earlier today. I thought that that was something that was amenable to Charlie to work with this on. If that's not the case, I apologize. But you are correct. The Aspen Dental is the kickoff building. The only thing where there's an urgency as far as potentially losing an anchor kickoff tenant, which instead of having this development start very shortly, could be problematic for us.
Potentially, we wouldn't move forward.
What's, are you still up the scene?
Thought, I, I, I am, only because I see the cause for concern in Charlie's eyes. I don't see that diminishing at all. And where we rely on him so much for his expertise, I can't see turning a blind eye to his recommendation.
And, and I don't mean it to look that way. I, you know, I'm just trying to look for a way to resolve things this evening, that's it.
But if, if, Charlie, if they, if they made the changes and we could date the plan accordingly, do you see any reason you wouldn't sign off on it?
I, I don't like, just hear me out for a second, Mark. Yeah, you can work out a date. We can decide on a future date if you want to incorporate into the, into the special permit, a, a date in the future that will incorporate whatever changes get made. Or you can say same date you've got today, provided there's some notation on the plan that says they've been revised up through some future date. I don't know how you want to do it. But some reference so that there's no question, but what the plans you're looking at are the ones that finally get approved. The thing I don't like to do, I'll work with you as best I can, is make a decision for the board. My job here is to make recommendations to you as a board. And if you want to approve the plan subject to my approval, that puts me on a pretty precipitous ledge, in my view. Because if I say that I don't like what's been done, what's that, what's that put me in for a position? I would, I would, if it were me, I would rather have everything done. You vote on the special permit conditions, and it's over and done with. I realize that's not what the applicant wants because they're getting pressure from, from somebody who wants to get his foothold in the ground here and get started. I appreciate that. But we've got to work out something that is amenable. I don't like to be doing the conditions of approval for the board and all of a sudden it's signed off because I said, okay. Because the recommendations really need to come to you as a vote.
Would the board be interested in a special meeting?
That's exactly what was running through my mind.
That's what I was going to comment on. I think, in all fairness.
The only thing, I, I was reluctant to pull it out before because in the past, the board has expressed a desire not to do that. But I think there are some extenuating circumstances.
That's exactly what I was thinking. If, if they could get the soil sample done right away, Charlie can have his.
What's, what date is, what date is June 1st?
First is the Saturday.
How much time do you need?
All right.
Fully revised plans, have the soil test back.
What we could do is this, go to Baypoint Country Club and do that on the course there.
That's perfect.
It's tough enough as.
Baypoint, we'll just do it on the knife hole out there.
It's tough enough as it is, come on.
I'll even caddy for you.
27th is the holiday?
Yeah, we'd have to do it before.
So, when.
June 1st is Saturday.
When would the next regularly scheduled meeting have been but for the holiday?
June 10th.
No, that's the next one you are having.
27th is, it would be the second, the fourth Monday in the month, and that would be the regular scheduled meeting. But that's Memorial Day.
So.
Will this potentially be completed in a week?
Potentially.
Is that kind of too close?
No, it's a little bit up to them to get the information back to me.
We'll get it done.
We discussed by telephone what those changes are that I need to get. There's some, I guess, misunderstanding as to what some of the drainage calculations show that I need to work out with them. But if they can get the soil testing done and get that, I'm not expecting any changes. I'm not suggesting that. It's just the idea, I want that information so that I can say to you folks. You've got conditions that are acceptable and, and we'll back up the design that they've got.
Throw whoever we have to throw at it.
If you can work something out within a week, I can work within a week.
As, as, as long as you'll commit to working with us, we'll absolutely have it to you and be, be ready for a week from tonight.
Week from tonight. Yeah, we, we can have information by Friday.
I mean, I'll, I'll meet whatever night you want.
Next Monday, work for you. All right, I'll look for a motion.
What's that date?
20th.
Okay.
Victoria Day in Canada.
We appreciate it very much.
Can we, can I get a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to continue the decision on Seth Toby Road until Monday, the 20th?
7:00 P.M.?
At 7:00 P.M.
Did we close the hearing?
This room available?
Seconded it?
Didn't it vote?
Yeah, this room's available?
It, just a, I guess, point of procedure. Technically, did you close the hearing from public, further public comment?
No.
We haven't yet.
No.
We're still getting.
Yep, no, I just didn't know if you had or not, if you needed to reopen it.
Ballroom favor?
Thank you. See you next week.
Referrals, do you want to be together business before we end of the referrals?
Okay.
Under any other business, we have a recommendation, an interview with Richard Swenson, who has applied for the Associate Membership to the Board. I know you may recognize, he came before us to discuss possible town meeting actions.
Good evening.
Not too long ago for the Redevelopment Authority.
So, I, I am Richard Swenson. I live at Nine Churchill Ave. Been a resident for four years, property owner for five. As you all know, I'm a member of the Redevelopment Authority, the One Citizen at Large member. And I've applied for the Associate Planning Board Member here on your planning board. I submitted an application and a letter. Have you all seen that? I have copies if you'd like.
I never saw it.
You have some copies? No, I got it by email, but I didn't know if it got circulated to everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie, you brought one for you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
When I applied for the position on Redevelopment Authority, I was asked why I wanted to do that. And the answer I told the interviewing people at that time was that I was interested in watching Wareham grow and, and develop. And I was a pro-development person, but I wanted to work with the town, the residents, the businesses, to do it in an orderly fashion and make this town even more attractive than it is now. Good place to live, good place to work. I think that the answer I gave them in that interview process is the exact same answer I would give you all when you asked me why I want to be on a planning board, for those very same reasons. But that's at a, at a pretty high level. One of the things I noticed in the Wareham master plan is a strong recommendation that the town departments work together better than they are today. And in talking with Ken, I asked him, I said, do you think that if I was to apply to the planning board, that I could help build some bridges between some of the departments? And he thought that was an idea to consider. And I did consider it, and that's why I'm here tonight. I think that what I did in my professional career was all based on building bridges between people with different goals and objectives to make them come together to a higher goal. And I think I can do that. I can be helpful. I can make our, our boards and our agencies that we have in this town more effective and work better. I wouldn't be able to do that much immediately as an associate member, being that I'd be a member that didn't vote. But it would be my long-term goal to be a full-time member eventually when the seat was open. I would, I would want to be considered for it. So, that's what I have for you now. I, I can keep talking if you like, or I can let you guys talk.
Any questions?
Richard and I have already talked at length. I think he'd be a good addition.
Strike one.
I'll give him strike two then, because I also had a conversation with Richard and found it to be an enjoyable experience.
I did also, so you're out.
Let me, if I, if I can, then let, let me talk about an issue that has been brought up to me, and that is about conflict of interest between the Redevelopment Authority position I have and the planning board position. I talked with some people about this, and it made me pause and think about it. And while there is potential for an appearance of a conflict of interest, I think that the goals and the missions of the Redevelopment Authority and the planning board are, are the same, is what we talked about, what I talked about just a minute ago about making Wareham a better place to live and work and do business. The Redevelopment Authority, I, I consider their role in life to be one to create opportunity. I consider the planning board's role to be one that says people that take advantage of those opportunities, follow all the rules and the laws of the town. And that, and they're very different. But again, to a common goal. So, I also did talk to the Ethics Commission, and I included a copy of the response I got from the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission about conflict of interest. And I was assured that it is fine for me to serve on both boards. If there is a appearance of a conflict of interest, there's a form I need to fill out and provide to town clerk. I think I'd already shared that with you, George. So, while I don't think there ever will be one, in that my goal personally, on each, on each board or authority, the best interests of Wareham are, are what I'm striving for legally or legally, there isn't an issue. So, I need to, I want that on the table because I want people to understand. I have done the research there.
And as, as a member of the Redevelopment Authority, you've probably taken the ethics exam on, online.
I did.
And a lot to do with this is that of perception. And as long as you approach things with openness and, and disclosure, then you can eliminate those.
I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think, I think you can ask Ken about what my position is on transparency at the Redevelopment Authority, and he'll tell you.
He discloses a lot.
So, any other questions? You guys have had a long night.
Yeah, we're running out of tape, so.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in and.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. The next item on the, under any other business is a covenant release for Frank Utano.
Good evening. My name is Attorney Derek Fernandez. I'm here with my client Mario Savoya to request a release for a covenant placed on land known as lots 14G and 14D off of White Pine Avenue. My client purchased these parcels back in 2005. Unfortunately, the attorney who prepared the deed did not do a title exam. Therefore, my client was not aware of these covenants when he purchased them. We are here before you tonight to ask for a release because my client is currently under contract to sell these properties to a buyer who is seeking some assurance that the board is not going to require any additional work to be performed on the lots, and they're not going to run into any issues, you know, conveying the property in the future. We do not believe that to be the case. The, these two lots were originally on a plan that covered 14 total lots. It appears from the records that 13 of them have been released, and the only lot remaining is this one, which is to be considered an unbuildable lot. And my client intends to convey it as such. It's unclear why this lot has not been released in the past. We believe that it's just because no one has requested it up until now.
This, these lots are created on a subdivision plan dated 1988.
Right.
And the covenant was placed on the land, I believe, as a form of surety for construction of the subdivision. Charlie could probably fill me in a little better than that if I'm mistaken. But it looks as though the one lot that was proposed was originally set aside as a playground area or?
It was a recreational lot in accordance with the state.
Yeah.
With the state subdivision rules, subdivision lot.
Yeah, later on, I believe there's correspondence in that folder that deals with that, that it would not be considered as a buildable lot. And also, there was a request in there that the access to it be rescinded, which would essentially allow the lot to have frontage on, is it White Pine Avenue, I guess it would be, not Helen Street, but White Pine Avenue. But it wouldn't be a buildable lot anyway, even if that happened, because it wouldn't have adequate frontage. So, I don't see any reason, just looking through the file, why it couldn't be released. But it should be released with that stipulation on it, that it's not considered as a buildable lot.
Those are the conditions of the approval that identify this as, as an unbuildable lot.
Now, you, let's see.
Does it conform as a buildable lot?
No. Never did.
What is the restriction on it?
Never did.
Doesn't have frontage?
No frontage?
Right.
Playground lots was a big thing back then. Kids don't play outside anymore, so.
Yeah. And the playground lots, I think, are only good for three. Yeah. And playground lots, I think, are only good for three years from the date that they're actually put on the plan. And then they, they're not that way anymore. But I don't see any reason, from what I saw looking through the file, where the planning board could not release it with that restriction on it, because that's what was voted.
Now, you were looking for 14D and 14B, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Which 14B appears to be the access.
I'm sorry, I thought you said 14D. It's 14D and 14G, not B.
Oh, C, okay. So you are, it's two landlots parcels, then?
Right. My client is actually the owner of the abutting land as well.
Is he intended purchaser and abutter?
No.
Do you have the abutter? Is that what?
No, I'm the owner.
Oh.
He's the, he's the abutter of these two lots, though. It's known as Three Helen Street.
Yeah.
I believe you'll see it on the plan as Lot 201, depending on which lot you're, which plan you're looking at.
You looking for, you trying to create a buildable lot, or you trying to just make the lot, let's see, add something else?
He is not, the intent is not to make it a buildable lot.
I bought the properties just to have a bigger yard. Secondly, I did put a conservation deed on it, so you pretty much can't even cut down a tree without talking to conservation. It's pretty wet in there. I can't see anybody building anything in there whatsoever. One's approximately 11,000 square feet, the other one's 28, and they're both wet. There's a few dry paths going through there.
The subdivision plan shows it. I'm not sure what that little one shows, but the larger plan shows it does a single lot, and part of the ownership was for the roadway that was supposed to go into it.
Yeah. I believe somebody owns the paper road staff.
Yeah, half the road, yeah.
There's pretty much no access now, unless you abut it.
All right, wait, it's back in here.
It's this one area back here.
Yeah, and I think there was a roadway or something that went through in here to it. It shows on the subdivision plan, but the lot is back here.
Other questions? Motion?
This one's on you, Mike.
Entertainer motion to release the covenant?
Sure.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Beaver Path subdivision modification.
I've got an operation and maintenance plan and covenant that was prepared by town council, which identifies Porcaro LLC slash William Bashant as the developer, who'd be responsible for the drainage facilities and structures on the, in the subdivision. This is in place of the homeowners association that has been unable to.
Still unanswered, are they?
Has been unable to come to agreement on forming homeowners association. And with this, the idea would be to satisfy the, to modify the conditions of approval of the subdivision to identify the developer applicant as the, and assesses and assigns as to the responsibility for the drainage maintenance. And with this, then we'd be releasing the total of $28,607.26, including any interest accrued from now until the release, or money that's been held in bond.
Less legal fees and planning board tax?
Does this condition then need to be written into the deed? What if you transfer this?
It's going to be on the deed.
It becomes the next guy's headache.
What's that, Mark?
Becomes the next guy's headache.
Oh.
So there's several different actions that are being recommended. One is the modification of the, of the conditions of approval of the subdivision that specifies the developer applicant as the, as the responsible party for the drainage maintenance. Next, the approval of the drainage maintenance agreement. And thirdly, the release of the bond, which is in three different accounts, for some unknown reason, that totals the $28,607.
So one is the bond, one is the 53G account, well, two of them are 53G accounts, and one is the actual.
Cash security.
So we'd be looking for a motion to accept the modification.
George, don't you have to do that through a modification process?
Now that you mention it, you have to modify in the same venue as the original conditions, which means public hearing.
Yeah. Shouldn't be any big deal to do it. It's a formality, but it's the only way that you can do it, because you've got to get that on record somehow, is modifying the original approval.
Appetize 14?
Yeah.
Second phase?
Yeah.
Open it and.
Open it, vote it, and close it, and be done. But it's the only way that I know that you can actually get the documents in the right order, so that they get recorded and so forth.
You're right.
Lost my head.
So, entertainer motion to have a pass at public hearing.
Yeah, we can, can we get that done by the 10?
That we can do by the 10, yes.
Okay. Motion to set the public hearing for modification of the Beaver Path subdivision covenant for
Can we put them first on the list? Two-minute deal, right?
Yeah.
You've got a whole bunch of them now. Biggs coming here anyway.
I can't think of anything better I'd rather do.
I hear a second.
Yes, second. You weren't listening again.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. So moved.
Thank you.
You're getting closer, Bill. Partial release of bond for Bay Point. There should be a note in your packet regarding the calculations. You doing any better job of keeping that roadway somewhat travelable?
Well, it's, it's all been pulverized now. And Saturday and today, they were supposed to be staking it out, pulling out the undesirable material and putting reclaimed in it.
Was there a message just in Charlie in the beginning?
Well, it was a requirement of the approval. Yeah.
Because remember one time they were talking about patching it in.
Yeah, and milling it?
Yeah.
There's no base under the most of that.
Yeah.
When they ground it up, they had pieces of asphalt this big, and the rest of it was sand. So there's no gradation of what was there, so it's just got to come out. And then, of course, everything's got to come up to grade anyway, and Surveyor had to go in there and actually stake out the 50-foot stations and put some marks on the stakes so he knew how to grade it too. So that was supposed to have been done today. I wasn't able to get out there to see it, but I'll be around there tomorrow.
So you think this amount of money they want is?
Oh, this is different, because the, I submitted a letter to Ken earlier today.
Yeah, I'll have copies of it.
Okay. And those item numbers refer to the requisition list. And all of that information, all of that work has been done. I've been expecting it almost every day because of the way they had to do it. So I have no problem with releasing that amount.
Entertainer motion to release 93-728.
94.
94.
94.
Did you say 94?
93.
Sorry. 94-728. It zeros out those line items altogether?
No. No, because they've got some castings that they've got to raise to final grade after the binder is put down. So there's a little bit of holdback.
There's still almost half a million in B, the bond, that's still held at this point.
Is that contingency release correct?
50% of the amount requested.
31-576? Is that wrong?
I don't know. When the contingency is created, it's 50% of the total.
Well, the way we've been doing it is taking 50% of the requested amount. So he's requesting 63-152. Half of that is 31-576. But there is still, of the items that I've got listed there, there is still some minor amounts that are left, because they haven't got the, the frames mortared in, they're not to final grade. So that's a part of what's still on the list with some balances due.
Shouldn't be half of the, no.
That contingency is if the town had to perform the work on a prevailing wage, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's only 50% of the amount that he's requesting for release. Yeah.
Motion? Did you? I fell asleep again.
Second.
Yeah, 15 minutes we have left.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So moved. Okay, now we have, back to item six, referral for.
Maxi Gass, you already did previously.
You did that last meeting?
Yeah.
So we just have Onze Fire District?
Correct.
Eight and 10, Cranberry Highway?
Correct.
Do they have a plan set?
Should I talk a really long time tonight now?
Won't be on tape if you do.
Well, that just means we put a door on both ends.
For the record, Jonathan Novak, kind of co-engineers and scientists, don't know how much you want me to get involved with this or into their proposing a fire station on, over by the.
San Pon Road.
Yeah, San Pon Road. I was going to say the Salvation Army. So there, the reason we're in front of ZBA is because there's a tiny little bit of grading that is actually on the residential portion. There are three parcels in this. Majority of it's in the commercial strip district. Very little bit is outside of that. So there's that. And then we also have a fuel storage area on the site. Everything on the site is designed to storm wash standards.
Is that in Archer Zone 1? Is that in there Zone 1, with their wells? Most of that's discontinued.
It is in wellhead protection. I don't know if it's in there.
Where's San Pon Road? You know where the, you know where Benny's was?
Yeah.
Go to that traffic light, turn left.
It is, it is allowed in that area as long as it's for specific use.
They're requesting a variance from Article 4, Section 444.6 to allow the storage of fuel for the fire station's emergency generator.
Oh, yes.
Just for the generator.
Yes. So.
It'll be above ground with containment.
Yeah, it's above ground, so there's the generator, and then the fuel storage drop back behind it.
This is technical stuff. Do you have any elevations on it, or?
That's just current front and, and rear view. So, though actually, there's the water department's off, so we're on this side. So this will be, the entrance will come in here at the main spot, the main access, and obviously the fire. The vehicle garage is off to the side as well. And then that's the rear view of it.
What is the side of?
Yeah, I don't, the side, the actual makeup of it.
Where are they going to keep, be jumping, walking onto the highway and get out of here?
So they'll come out down the road, and I believe it's the Salvation Army, there's a stoplight right there. So they'll come out down the road, and I believe it's the Salvation Army. There's a stoplight right there. It's kind of like a car just goes in and out. There's actually, the jug handle will make the turn down. There's a stoplight right there, so they'll come down and be able to, they'll be the way.
Jug handle's going away.
Well, yeah.
I think the jug handle stays, but it moves into that used car lot that's right there on the side.
It's becoming a, like a half circle so you can reverse direction.
Yeah.
On the referral, you make recommendations to the Board of Appeals as to the conditions or actions that they recommend and consider.
How much of it's in L-130?
The, the... Very, very tiny bit. So this is the, you know, the approximate line back here. So there is this portion of that, the building is, it's the site layout and reading, took a look here. But thi- this area back here, this portion of the parking lot and some of this reading, will actually be on in the R-130. So there's no structure. It's purely for the pavement and the off-site reading.
What's the bi-lot, about 35 feet?
Extension into joining... The district?
Yeah.
It's 30 or 35 feet. How much, 45?
Oh, I'm sorry, say that again.
How many feet into the...
Here, I mean, 35 to the edge of the corner, you know, it's off of that. It's roughly where the...
It's 30 feet.
Yeah.
Let's see what they call that structure. So that, the structure that they're, is that an abandoned pump station there that says it to be removed?
Yeah, it's an existing structure. I'm not the, sure what the purpose is of it, whether it's a pump station or whatnot. The, I believe the fire station was gonna, they're, they themselves are gonna be doing the demo work. There was some discussion about whether or not they were gonna use it as a practice fire.
It's a brick building?
Yeah.
This building got approved at town meeting?
Just any recommendations you'd see, any things you'd like to see.
What are we doing this for?
Site plan review.
This is for the Board of Appeals. Since there's variance in...
But the building has not been funded yet?
No, it's, it's the Onset Fire District. It's not a town, not a town meeting issue. They have, what, eight million, I think, to build it?
Eight million?
I don't see...
I'm not 100% positive. I know that they've done some preliminary costs and they're pretty tight on budget.
They just shrink it down, didn't they?
Yeah, I think they approved eight. It was 12, and they reduced it to eight.
The only thing I can see is I don't see any landscape plan.
So that's gonna be a satellite station, right, for Wayan?
I'm not 100% positive. I know it's the, I'm sure you could recommend that.
You could recommend it.
Better do it from a distance.
All right, everybody's one big happy family here.
Yes, we are.
Captain, good judge.
Is there anything you want to recommend to the, to the Board of Appeals?
Like I suggest some landscaping.
Landscaping.
And a review of site lighting so that it doesn't glow in the sky. There is some site lighting around. There's, I think, four...
That's gonna be a main station, right?
Yeah, it's the fire headquarters, district headquarters. There are some lighting setup. It's primarily gonna be building. There are a couple around the perimeter. And then there is gonna be a dedicated light at the generator. Everybody, I think all the land around there is owned by the, the actual district themselves, so.
Need a remote access to that traffic light on the Cranberry Highway?
I don't know if parts it has opticon or not. I haven't noticed it down there.
I, I would assume that they'd, they'd get it.
I would think they'd want to incorporate it with the new highway.
They're gonna, yeah, yeah, I would think that would be something they would request from Mass Highway.
Landscaping and lighting?
We gotta go back and...
And disguise the tunnel entrance so when they head for Onset Center in the tunnel, nobody else will find it.
They have a, the tunnel connects to the Cape Tunnel, so.
Got their permits on the trucks?
Do they have to do these minutes still?
You don't have to do the minutes.
You can wait till next time?
Wait till next time.
We'll just convey those to the Board, when you go to Board of Appeals?
Uh, next week, so we were, went through conservation last week and you guys this week, and then next week. I believe it's next week. So I think the 20, 20, the winds... Pardon?
Try to limit the amount of fun you have all at one time?
Yeah, there's nothing I like better than hanging out until midnight, so.
Good.
All right, thank you for your time.
Good luck. Referred to council, and the Inspectorarian has responded.
He needed information from the board.
This is how I see this thing? One of them has appealed.
He's, that's for the used skyline. Don't know what it does. I didn't see it, so I wasn't there, so I don't, couldn't tell you. I wasn't there, but I got named just the same. Anyway, motion?
Second?
Any discussion?
So come back here the 20th, come back to that one matter?
Just for that one issue.
About the minutes too?
Yeah, we'll do the minutes and probably an update on the next session.
On the 10th is the next meeting after that?
Correct.
So I'm gonna be coming back in the country on the 9th. If I get delayed for any reason, I'll try to give you a heads up, but you should make sure that...
Spur yourself time with ice all before you come to the meeting. You don't want anything from like foreign countries.
I'm just recommending that, I don't know what a manual schedule is, but you won't, you won't be able to vote on anything if he's, I get delayed, he's not here for some... Somebody's not here.
He can, he can review the minutes of the, the tape of the meeting.
Are we expecting him back by next week?
Who, Manuel?
I don't know.
I think so.
Okay.
Well, I'll be, I'll be here on, I'll be here next week.
It's just the 10th that's in question.
Because we, we have several other things that need to be voted for on the 10th, right? I, I intend to be here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting good year at 11 o'clock.